To his left, Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown. To my right, Councilmember at Large, Allen Dom. So we thank you very much. This begins the hearing on Resolution Number 160047. And we'll ask the Clerk to read the title of the resolution.
Resolution 160047. Resolution authorizing a full and comprehensive investigatory public hearing by Council's Committee on Finance on the impact reverse mortgage lending products are having on residents in the city of Philadelphia. Specifically, the public hearing will seek to determine the extent and impact such lending products have on the city's senior citizen homeowners and the potential intergovernmental remedies that can be developed to protect consumers from any unintentional harms that may result from acquiring this type of lending product.
Thank you very much. We note that Councilwoman Sherrell Parker is the sponsor of this important bill that affects us all. And we will call on her for opening comment.
Thank you so very much, Madam Chair. Let me start by just thanking our Finance Committee Chairwoman, Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, and also thank all members of the committee who are present and those who are en route and/or on their way. Today's fact-finding hearing will look at the impact reverse mortgage products are having on Philadelphia's senior citizens. And I want to emphasize that we are concerned here with gathering the facts necessary for us to take appropriate action. With this in mind, I also want to acknowledge our many federal and state government stakeholders who have accepted our invitation to witness today's public hearing. These stakeholders have agreed to partner with Philadelphia City Council to explore intergovernmental solutions to the problems we will hear about at today's hearing. Now, there are many of you in this room who this is really like a reunion for us because we were together in 2001. At that time, I wasn't sitting here, but I was sitting in the seats that you're sitting in right now, Sherrell, as a staffer for Councilwoman Marion Tasco when we worked on the issue of predatory lending. And if you'll remember, after all of that work, our bill was immediately preempted at another level of government. And we said, had we started with our federal and state government partners with us in the beginning, maybe we could have found a way around that. So I want to thank you. In attendance are senior representatives from our federal partners HUD, Region III, the Federal Reserve, and the Consumer Finance Protection Bureau, as well as Senator Casey and Congressman Brady. And we welcome the participation of our state partners from PHFA, the Pennsylvania Attorney General's Office, State Senator Art Haywood, and State Representatives John Taylor and Steve Kinsey. Let me state for the record that I believe that there is a place for reverse mortgages as a financial option. And I also realize that for many others, what seemed like a dream come true has literally turned into a nightmare. So the purpose of this hearing is to find out what we currently, one, know about the impact of reverse mortgages in Philadelphia, and also what data are we missing to get a full picture of the impact that it's having on our citizenry. We're going to hear from housing counselors who are on the front line when it comes to providing education to our seniors. Anita Brown and Nicole Evans from Clarify, thank you because you're going to give us our tutorial on what exactly reverse mortgages are, how they work, and who is an ideal borrower. You're also going to review for us the findings of a series of reports published by, very importantly, the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, which is the federal agency that regulates the reverse mortgage industry. We're going to hear testimony from the Reinvestment Fund, which for years now has been gathering data on the impact of reverse mortgages in our city. And for full disclosure, my interest in this issue was generated as a result of reading a report that was produced by the Reinvestment Fund on this issue. And it showed an alarming increase in mortgage foreclosure specifically relating to reverse mortgage products. On our third and fourth panels, we'll feature two of our city's premier legal services programs who have been out front helping seniors to stop reverse mortgage foreclosures, and that is the Senior Law Project and Community Legal Services. We're also going to hear testimony from Attorney Beth Shea of the Senior Law Center and Peter Schneider of Community Legal Services. And they're going to talk to us about the impact that the products are having firsthand. And we're going to hear from them, two of their clients, Mrs. Brenda Myers and Ms. Ruth Guerriario. And if I said that incorrectly, she's going to correct me when she gets to the table and identifies herself. And finally, we're going to hear from my Deputy Director of Housing at OHC, who's a long-term friend, and from our City Council's Director of Civic Engagement. So I want to again thank my deep appreciation, give you my deep appreciation, and thank you all for participating in today's hearing. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We thank Councilwoman Parker for all the work that she's done on this hearing and all those she has certainly invited and all of you who have come. We also note that Councilman Mark Squill is here, as is Councilman David O. So thank you very much. And we are now to begin. Will the Clerk please read the names of those from our first panel?
Panel on Background on Reverse Mortgages. Anita M. Brown, Chief Operating Officer, Clarify, and Nicole Evans, Reverse Mortgage Certified Counselor, Clarify.
Paulette Adams from our office speaks about you all the time. We appreciate all that you all do.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. My name's Anita Brown, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Clarify. We're a nonprofit homeownership and credit counseling agency in the city of Philadelphia and the surrounding counties. We have been working with homeowners since 1966. This is our 50th anniversary year. So today, I will be providing an overview of the reverse mortgages, what they are, how they work. Nicole?
Good morning. My name's Nicole Evans. I'm a housing and reverse mortgage counselor at Clarify. I'm going to be providing some information on the, some, just ideal traits that an ideal reverse mortgage borrower will have.
That's fine, whatever works for you. So the home equity conversion mortgage, HECCOM, as is known in the industry, is a government-insured product. But prior to that, in 1961, the very first reverse mortgage was made through a savings and loan up in Maine. But through the years, into the 80s, the product was developed. And then in 1988, HUD provided the authority to insure reverse mortgages, and that's when Ronald Reagan signed the bill into law. The first loan was closed with federal insurance in 1989. Through the years into 1997, the pool of lenders providing the service continued to grow. By 1997, there were almost 200 banks and lenders providing this product. In 2001, AARP stepped in to provide a certification process for counselors and create protocol so to put some rules and parameters around how the counseling needed to be done and how the counselors needed to be certified. In 2008, the baby boomers first started turning 62, so that created a huge influx into the market. Some rules, some additional rules were put in place regarding, you know, limits on fees, cross-sales of investment products. And at that point in time, independent counseling became required. So when a mortgage broker is working with a homeowner, previously, they would refer them to one counseling agency. And at that point in time, the rules went into place to make it mandatory to provide the homeowner with options, national agencies as well as local agencies. So what does a reverse mortgage do? It basically gives the homeowner the ability to draw equity. Those are to meet their monthly income needs, to, you know, pay for expenses that are day-to-day, as well as to meet the needs of home repairs and maintenance. And also, one of the initial reasons was to pay for medical expenses. I'm sure that many of you have seen the commercials that now advertise this product as a lifestyle improvement product. I think I skipped one. Maybe my slides are out of order. Okay. So in order to qualify for a home equity conversion mortgage or reverse mortgage, at least one of the homeowners needs to be 62 or older. It must be a home that's owned and is the primary residence. And there needs to be sufficient equity in the property to borrow against. So one of the problems that has occurred in the city is the inability of homeowners to pay their property taxes and insurance. So in 2015, the rules were changed that if you don't have the ability to pay those taxes and insurance, there must be funds taken from the loan that are set aside to pay those going forward. So there are many ways that a HECCOM loan can be taken, a fixed rate or an adjustable rate. In 2008, the fixed-rate loan became very popular. And at that point in time, people were taking fixed-rate requires a cash out, and that was jeopardizing some of their public benefits, which Nicole will speak to in a little bit. You can take that lump-sum payment. You can take a line of credit. You can have a term payment. And a term payment is a set amount for a certain period of time, and that's generally used by individuals who are expecting something else down the line that then they would no longer need the reverse mortgage, an annuity perhaps that is maturing at some point. The 10-year option is an option that allows a certain amount for life. So that's generally a lower amount, but it gives the homeowner a specific amount for the rest of their life, as long as they live in the house, even if they outlive the equity or the original loan amount. And then there are combinations of all of those options that can be taken by the homeowner. So as far as advantages of the loan, non-traditional qualifying is, so there, while recently, there's been implementations of credit review and a financial assessment. It's not the same as a forward mortgage, so there's no debt-to-income ratios that are assessed or reviewed. So obtaining the mortgage without that traditional mortgage qualification. No monthly mortgage payment. So you have access to the equity in your home, you have access to the money. However, there's no payment made on a monthly basis. So again, tapping into the equity. And the ability to live in your home until death, or the sale, or the non-occupancy is another advantage, but that also has some things that are tied to it as far as the non-borrowing spouse is concerned. So some of the considerations that need to be taken into play when taking out a reverse mortgage is there is a high, there are high upfront costs to this loan. Insurance premiums that are paid to the lender to protect the lender. So the FHA insurance is actually protecting the lender from taking a loss in the case of that 10-year payment that could possibly happen, or also in the case what's happening today, in a lot of cases where the taxes and insurance are not being paid and the lender is advancing those funds. You know, another consideration is affecting eligibility for government assistance. So any government assistance that has, is it asset-based assistance, taking that lump sum then puts those benefits in jeopardy. So by taking a lump sum, you now have assets in the bank, you no longer are eligible. It creates a cycle that Nicole will speak to in a bit. The other consideration is for homeowners who are looking to leave a property and keep it in the family for years and years, you know, it does not safeguard that inheritance for their children. And again, back to the responsibility of making the monthly payments for real estate taxes and homeowner's insurance is something that is often lost in the translation. So this demonstrates the rising debt and the falling equity of a reverse mortgage. With a traditional mortgage, monthly payments are being made, the balance is going down, the equity is increasing. Eventually, the home is owned free and clear. On a reverse mortgage, that balance from initial inception, if the upfront fees are financed, that balance continues to rise, the interest compounds continually, the homeowner continues to lose their equity in the home. So in 2012, the CFPB gained oversight of the reverse mortgage process. And at that time, they created a report to Congress that spoke to, you know, what was happening in the market at that point in time. You know, some of the key findings were that reverse mortgage products are complex. The amount of documentation and information that is delivered to the homeowner throughout the process is extensive, and it can be very confusing to homeowners, even with a detailed counseling session. The other issue is that, you know, as I spoke in earlier, this lifestyle improvement as part of this product is being sold. And previously borrowers were taking out this loan, and it was initially intended to, as an aging-in-place program. But then it evolved into, you know, that you can use it for different things. You can take the loan and go on vacation, or you can take the loan and pay off an existing mortgage, which is a good thing because then it frees up the cash for the right borrower. But those things definitely add risk. So another one of the findings was the market dynamics and the, so homeowners who then were unable to pay their taxes and their insurance, the mortgage company then steps in and makes those payments, again, drawing down the equity. That line of credit eventually is fully maximized. And then at the next point in time, when the taxes and insurance have to be paid, the foreclosure process is possible. In the misleading advertising, that was part of a, part of the study indicated that people really don't understand what the advertising is saying. So the term a government-backed loan is very confusing to a lot of homeowners. They believe that this is a government program, that they're entitled to something for free. The stay-in-your-home piece often confuses homeowners. They don't understand that there is a possibility that they might have to leave the home. You know, we work with clients who, after counseling, they'll say to us, well, gee, that's not what the video said when I got that in the mail. So it's, misleading is maybe a strong term. It's a lack of information or partial information that possibly is what the concern might be. So the other piece of the requirement is counseling. So homeowners must receive counseling before an application is submitted. Doesn't mean that they haven't completed an application, it just means that they have to have a certificate saying they've been counseled prior to that application being sent to underwriting. So a lot of the borrowers that we counsel, or the homeowners, potential borrowers, have already been working with a mortgage broker prior to receiving that counseling. One of the findings within the study is that the impartiality possibility. So as I mentioned, counseling was required in 2008 to become independent, but there are still cases where homeowners are possibly directed to specific agencies. Counseling also, at times, is not sufficient to counteract the amount of information or the amount of pressure possibly that the homeowner is receiving to take out this loan. So as I mentioned, the amount of information to digest and whether the homeowner has full capacity or diminished capacity, it's still an exorbitant amount of information. And the terminology is complex, and trying to explain what the terms mean to homeowners is sometimes. And then the other piece of that is the non-borrowing spouses and family members are not included in the process. We always encourage the homeowners to involve their dependents or, you know, the non-borrowing spouse is now required to be part of the process, but that was, that's something that's new that was recently changed. Another risk is some of the scams that happen within this market. And I believe Beth from Senior Law Center will speak to some of that. But something that happened in the past that is, that has to be part of the counseling process now is investment brokers trying to help have homeowners tap into their home equity to then put that money into the investment market. So there have been cases where individuals have done that, and then, you know, we see the ups and downs of the market, so then we know what happens to the funds of that individual. Now they have absolutely nothing. Another case, something that needs to be improved, is when the borrower does pass away and the home is left, you know, a better process to reach out to the non-borrowing spouse and the heirs to help them through that process is something that needs to have some improvement. And then, as I mentioned, the disclosures that are required, they are quite difficult to understand. One of the things that we are now experimenting with at Clarify is the CFPB has just developed an infographic brochure that we are sending out to all of our reverse mortgage clients that when they're having difficulty understanding a concept, providing them with this infographic to help them through that process. And that's just underway, so we don't have any results for that. But the other thing that they also receive is a booklet developed by the National Council on Aging called Using Your Home to Stay in Your Home. And we also use that as part of our reference when we're counseling homeowners. So I will now turn this over to Nicole, who will speak about the ideal client.
Thank you. Before she begins, let me note that Councilwoman Cindy Bass is here as well. Thank you.
Good morning.
Excuse me one moment. There's Bobby Heenan over there. So all members of the committee are here. Thank you. Thank you. Al Taubinberger, so you've got a full house. Thank you. Thank you.
Essentially, the reverse mortgage is an equity loan that allows seniors to borrow against the equity of their home without having to worry about making monthly payments. The obvious benefit of that is not having to make the monthly payment, but because the payments are being deferred, there's a debt that's building up on the loan balance, which at the end of the loan is going to need to be paid. Some of the concerns that homeowners run into are just not being properly informed prior to their counseling as to exactly what the loan is. There is the impression that it is a government-issued loan and that the money is not going to get paid back, that, just not a complete understanding of how the loan works. The ideal homeowner has a strong commitment to the understanding of the process. They, counseling's not just a checkbox. They actually had done some research prior to looking, prior to getting the reverse mortgage. They've considered other options. They've taken an interest and committed themselves to understanding how the loan works and what the impact of that is going to be. The sufficient equity in the home. When the reverse mortgage is taken out, only a portion of the equity is available to be borrowed. A good portion of the equity is left in reserves to counteract the fact that the loan balance is going up over time. And so if you have a $100,000 house, for example, you may only be able to borrow $45,000 or $50,000 of that equity, and the rest of it stays in, remains in reserve for the increasing balance over time. Clients who have a good idea of, have been maintaining repairs and updating their home and have kind of a timetable of when those repairs are going to be needed, and are planning and are saving for those repairs along the way. And clients who have sufficient income, who aren't just depending on the reverse mortgage to be able to manage their month-to-month expenses, from social security, pension, 401K, other income sources. It's important that they have savings for their property taxes and their homeowner's insurance because that's probably the biggest problem that we run into with folks with the reverse mortgage, is not being able to maintain those ongoing expenses. Some thought as to, with sufficient income, if it's a couple living in the house and they're depending on both incomes, both pensions, both social securities, to maintain the household expenses, if one of the spouses should pass away, that they're going to be able to continue making those, maintaining those household expenses, or if they have an exit plan, an exit strategy already figured out. Clients who've already been living on retirement income, clients who, sometimes we have clients who come in who are actually still working but are 62 years old and are looking into the reverse mortgage and haven't really thought about what their income is going to be when they're dealing with just social security and a pension. So if they've already been sort of managing on their social security, their pension, preserving their 401K savings, things like that, it's helpful for them going into the process. Having other assets, just simply having some savings and that mindset of putting money away over time and understanding the importance of that. No dependents. When there's other folks living in the property, either a non-borrowing spouse, or adult children or grandchildren, whether they're legal dependents or not, once the homeowner leaves the house, the reverse mortgage is going to be due and payable very soon after that, and that can displace the rest of the family. We have had clients who have gotten the reverse mortgage counseling while they're still 61, waiting to close the loan on their 62nd birthday. So being past the minimum age of 62 and really have considering how they're going to maintain their expenses for, you know, for the rest of their lifetime. The reverse mortgage is good for helping folks age in place and to deal with medical care needs. Sometimes folks will choose to get the reverse mortgage to have in-home health care or to have an aide come and help with, you know, heavy-duty household chores and things like that, that they wouldn't normally be able to afford on their fixed income. And a willingness to involve their family and the heirs in the process so that everybody who's in the home has an idea of what's going on so that when the borrower, if the borrower passes away, that it's not a surprise that there's this existing loan that needs to be resolved. It's hard for, when anybody passes, there's always that grieving time and the stress involved with someone passing, but then when you have to make a large involved with someone passing, but then when you have to make a large financial decision at that point, it can add some extra undue stress to the family.
Thank you. Questions? Questions from the panel? Councilman Don?
Thank you, Chairwoman Blackwell, and thank you for your testimony today. I just have a question for you. It seems to me the problem with reverse mortgages is that people are getting a chunk of money, but they don't always know how to invest wisely, right? Is there a reverse mortgage that, if I owned a home for $100,000 of value and I had a $30,000 or $20,000 loan, that I could get a reverse mortgage that would just allow me not to pay the payments, but not get any cash upfront?
Yes, you can use the reverse mortgage just to refinance an existing mortgage to eliminate the monthly mortgage payments. The other payment options that are also available, you don't have to take the money as a lump sum amount, the borrower has the option to take it as a line of credit and just kind of use it as they need it, or they also have the choice to get monthly payments, which could just supplement their income for the rest of their life.
And a reverse mortgage, what's the typical interest rate in a reverse versus a conventional?
The interest rates right now are just shy of 4%. They're like 3% for the reverse mortgage, and then there's 1.25% mortgage insurance that's added in per year.
So, if I took a conventional mortgage today, it's 3.5 to 3.75, and the reverse is 5.25 with the insurance added in?
I would say 4 with the mortgage insurance.
But 1.25 is on top of the 4?
No, that's, I included that in there.
So, it's 4 including the mortgage insurance?
Yes. But it's compounding, so if you figure the loan balance, if you start out with a balance of, let's say you borrowed $40,000, it cost $8,000 to get the reverse mortgage, the interest is compounding on the reverse mortgage, so as it's going up, the amount of interest is going, going to be going up as well, because you're dealing with a higher balance.
And you're paying every month on the balance plus the payment you didn't pay?
The payments are deferred on the reverse mortgage until the homeowner permanently leaves the home, either if they decide to sell the home or upon their passing.
I understand that deferred, but the interest is building on that deferred payment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions? Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning. Let me first commend Councilwoman Parker for wrapping her head around this. As a consumer watching the advertisements, and I would like to think I'm halfway intelligent, I didn't, I never got anything about reverse mortgages, and I'm just beginning to get some level of understanding here. So, I thank you, because it really is a big issue, and it's interesting, we host senior citizen forums eight consecutive weeks in the fall of the year, visiting senior citizen centers around the city, and a couple of times, we've had questions come up around reverse mortgages, to which I've had to say, "I'll have to get a professional to come back and speak with you about that," because that's an issue that's above my level of understanding. And so, with that said, I have two questions. It may be obvious who the winners are in this type of endeavor, enterprise, if that's what you want to call it, but I need to hear from you, who are the winners when seniors find themselves trapped in this type of circumstance? And secondly, are there remedies to rescue citizens when they find themselves in this quid pro quo?
As far as the rescue of the citizens, usually the issue comes in with the real estate taxes and homeowner's insurance defaulting. The servicers will generally allow the homeowner a repayment plan, but it's usually, if they're on a fixed income, it may not necessarily be affordable for them. And in addition to dealing with the repayment plan for the past due taxes that the servicer has paid, they have to plan ahead for when the next tax, net set of taxes are going to be due as well, which kind of puts the things into a spin. So, there's not a lot of options available. If they've fallen off track, there's not a lot of programs that are available to right the ship.
My last question is, I would, let me not assume anything. Are you available to speak with seniors, once the council lady decides what her course of action is, to visit with my office at senior citizen forums and provide a Cliff Note version of this? What, so what would you call this? Is it a tool? What is it?
The reverse mortgage?
Reverse mortgage, yes.
It is a tool for the right borrower. So, you know, to, as we said, age in place, take care of expenses, take care of home repairs, not use it frivolously, or take the money and, you know, hand it out to family members or an investment broker, without all that sound advice. But the, to answer your question about speaking out in the communities, yes, that is something that Clarify does on a regular basis. So, if you reach out to me afterwards, I can put you in touch with our Director of Education, who will then set those, what the meetings that you have will work to accommodate.
Okay. Thank you. This is, this is an exceedingly important issue. I thank you very much. Yes, it is, Councilwoman. Councilman Heenan?
Hi. Good morning, and thank you for your presentation. I have two questions. Do the assessments go in, in the factor in the reverse mortgage?
The city tax assessments?
Yes, the reassessment of the House?
They do, the mortgage company does an appraisal on the property. They have to do an FHA appraisal and inspection as part of the loan process.
Okay, now, are reverse mortgage lenders accounting for any kind of benefits at the city protections, fail safes that the city may have, such as senior freezes, Loop, or any tax benefits, such as a homestead exemption? Is that all factored in from the mortgage lender perspective?
I don't think that they take those things into consideration. I'm not certain. I can't answer on that.
Especially here in the city of Philadelphia. I mean, that's a...
Normally, the real estate taxes and homeowner's insurance are the responsibility of the borrower. Until very recently, the reverse mortgage just left it up to the borrower to pay them. Last year, there was an additional component added to the reverse mortgage lending process where the lender has to do a financial assessment, and as part of that financial assessment, they're looking at the viability of the long-term client staying in the property. At that point, I would, I would hope that they would take those programs into account, but it's really varies from lender to lender as to how they're managing that risk aspect.
I mean, I would hope so as well. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of risk that's involved, especially, I mean, you think of it, not to compare, because it's certainly different, but, you know, people prey upon others' lack of, lack of information, lack of knowledge of what a program is and the long-term stability of it and the financial feasibility of it. I mean, you know, Councilwoman Tasco was fighting predatory lending for years and years and years, right, until something, you know, was addressed about it. So, people have a way of swimming around, you know, like sharks, and preying on opportunities. So, I don't know if there's a way or if there's a vehicle to make sure that the reverse mortgage lenders in the city of Philadelphia, when it comes to, especially when it comes to our seniors, they don't take advantage of Philadelphians.
Thank you, Councilman. Good question, and Councilwoman Brown, yours was good as well. Councilman Greenlee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Brown, you, in one of your answers to Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, you said, "is good for the, for the right borrower," I think is what you said. Have there been studies to show of the people who take advantage of these programs, how many are the right borrower, if you will? Because we hear, obviously, probably more about what turns out to be the wrong borrower, I guess. So, who are, you know, have there been some kind of studies, percentages, whatever?
There have been studies, and one was just recently released last week about the satisfaction of the borrower. So, a study was conducted of a sampling of reverse mortgage borrowers over the past several years, and these were borrowers who got a mortgage, who didn't get a mortgage or got a mortgage and then paid it off. And the satisfaction rate was in the mid to high 70s, depending on the group of, you know, working, you know, having that reverse mortgage and what it had done for them and their ability to stay in the home, et cetera. So, you know, the dissatisfaction of the other 25 or so percent, I didn't really go into detail on what that entailed, but...
So, 70, 75%, you said?
Are satisfied, and it has, you know, positively impacted their lives. And I'd be happy to share that study with Councilwoman.
Yeah, if you could, that would be great, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and again, thank my colleagues for such great questions. I want to follow up quickly on a question that Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, when she talked about the issue of education. Now, here in the city of Philadelphia, am I accurate when I say that Clarify is one of only two housing counseling agencies, which is certified to provide reverse mortgage counseling?
I believe that there might be more than two.
There may be more than two?
Yeah. I think there's five or six, or?
I think so. And there's national entities as well.
Would you be able to get us a list of the...
Absolutely.
The housing counseling agencies, and housing counseling agencies that work directly with our Office of Housing and Community Development?
Yes.
Who are certified to provide reverse mortgage counseling in the city of Philadelphia?
Absolutely.
Because based on the list that we have, we had, obviously, Clarify as sort of the premier and or primary entity, and we only saw one others. Tell me this, give me a sense of how many homeowners you've counseled about reverse mortgages in the past four years. How many would you say?
We counsel about 500 people a year.
500 a year?
But about 25% of those are Philadelphia residents, because we are in the surrounding counties, and we're also in Delaware and New Jersey.
And so, when you say 25%, I mean, for the reverse mortgage perspective, 25%?
So, of the 500 reverse mortgage sessions that Clarify does on an annual basis, 25% of those are Philadelphia homeowners.
Philly homeowners, okay. Now, this follows up on Councilman Greenlee's question about the ideal reverse mortgage borrower. Just help me again with the numbers and tell me, based on the 500 that you see, specifically the 25% here that you just referenced, how many of them fit into that ideal borrower sort of category? Because I guess what I'm trying to figure out is that those who are coming to you to get counseling to take advantage of this prospective product, it's not typically or always the ideal borrower?
That's correct. Of all of the borrowers that we counsel, primarily, they are either low-income or very low-income, and that is across the footprint. That is not just Philadelphia. The statistics do not differ for the clients that we counsel at Clarify by geography. So, the, having other assets is usually something that is not present. You know, having a plan before they sit down with a counselor to understand, you know, what would happen in certain circumstances, it's not something that happens. So, as Nicole mentioned, you know, someone that's invested in the process understands and has done some research before they even contacted somebody that they saw on television or somebody that a friend told them to call, is someone that has a foundation of knowledge, and that's generally not the highest percentage of the folks that we see.
Well, now, my final question to you is that I want, I'm, I want to understand the rules, the rules associated with how you provide counseling for reverse mortgages. So, for example, if you are looking at the profile, you just gave us a snapshot of what the ideal borrower looks like, and then that very low-income individual comes into the office for counseling, are you, as the certified reverse mortgage counseling agency, able to tell them, based on the data that you've presented to us today, "We do not recommend," or "we do recommend"? Can you give them your judgment about whether or not you think this product would be helpful to them?
No, our role is, is to give them the pros and cons of the different options that they have available to them. Our role is not to give them advice on what they should or should not do. It is specifically to lay out those options, tell them all the good things and all of the not-so-good things about the different options that they have in front of them.
I'm, and this is going to sound a little silly, but you're going to have to just walk me through this. Sherrell Parker comes into Clarify for counseling. You look at my overall economic profile, you do a debt-to-income ratio, I mean, everything associated with what you have to do to get a snapshot of the fiscal health of my personal life. And when you look at my income, particularly if I'm on a fixed income, and you know that I'm interested in this product, but as my colleague, Councilman Don, mentioned earlier, what if there was another product that, that was fitting, or that there is some attribute associated with it? For example, you mentioned the taxes, being able to, and maintaining your daily other bills. If you look at that overall economic sort of picture for me, you can't give me your expert opinion of whether or not this product is apropos for me?
We educate the clients on what the options are, that there are these programs available, that Loop is available, that you could, you know, that somebody who's not applying, who isn't participating in like the CAT program, for example, that that's available. Maybe they're not using food stamps but are eligible for food stamps, things like that, where they may not have realized that there were other resources available. We try to make those, those recommendations, that they could look into those programs.
But in essence, you can't tell me if you think the reverse mortgage is a good fit for my financial needs?
No.
That's, okay, thank you.
And that, that follows the protocol.
Right. Thank you. More questions? Councilwoman Bass?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, I just really wanted to just expound on an observation, and that is that, you know, when you look at the advertisements for reverse mortgages, it's always someone who is, you know, very much middle-class, very stable in terms of financial planning and well-prepared for retirement and for senior years, someone who is educated and financially savvy. When you look at the advertisements and what is presented, it's very much different from the actual clientele that these companies are reaching out to, you know, try to sell these reverse mortgages to. So, I'm just really glad that you were able to bring that to the forefront, because I think a lot of people assume, if you wouldn't know, you would assume that a reverse mortgage often goes to someone who knows what they're doing, who knows exactly what the implications are. I used to be a housing counselor many, many moons ago, and I see Haram Carmona, who used to be my supervisor, from OHC D. But I remember specifically talking about reverse mortgages, and this was in the 90s, and, you know, at that point, I think that they were just coming online, and people were really just dealing with, how do we get in front of this thing that is coming into our community? So, I just really wanted to thank you for bringing out that information and making sure that people understood that what is presented in terms of advertised, you know, the advertisement, and who this product is geared to, and who actually is applying for these types of products are two completely different groups of people. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Nosa, Councilman Derek Green is here. Thank you. Councilman Greenlee?
Yeah, just, thank you, Madam Chair. Just very quick, in follow-up to Councilwoman Bass's observations, this study that you're going to give us, does that break down economically at all, too, as far as, like you said, 70 and 75% of the people are satisfied? It might be interesting to see how, what percentage of that are the middle-class people, the folks that maybe more understand this program, as opposed to the 20, 25% that may be the lower-income people? I don't know if it's broken down like that, but...
I don't recall that. In the report, it may very well be in there, but I will get that to you.
Okay. Because that would be kind of interesting to know, because it kind of backs up what I think a lot of us feel here, that, you know, the lower-income people are the folks that are...
Right.
Not that, not in that satisfied category. Not that, not in that satisfied category, but I guess we'll see. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Parker?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman, and I wanted to say, Councilman Greenlee, your question just sets us right up for the second panel, because the Reinvestment Fund is going to talk to us about the exact data and the trends and sort of what we would need, so thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much. Councilman Don, before you ladies leave?
I just have one last, two last questions. I just want to clarify something. A conventional mortgage today is three and a half to 3.75. And you said that a reverse mortgage is four plus one and a quarter, is that correct?
No, it's, it's, it's like 2.6 and then the one and the quarter, so it works out to be just about four percent, just a little over four percent.
So there's only a quarter to a half a point difference between the two instruments, is that correct?
Yes, the rates are close.
Okay, and, but there's also upfront costs?
There are closing costs.
What are those as a percentage of the loan typically?
Six, seven percent? Probably six or seven percent of the home value.
Six or seven percent of the home value are the upfront costs?
Yeah.
That's where they're making the money, then?
It's not an inexpensive loan product.
That's, okay, that's pretty high. The second question, do we, does the reverse lender pay the real estate taxes?
No. No. Now, as part of the financial assessment, the lender can hold money aside from what they make available to the borrower, but that's just been since April of last year.
Are many of these reverse loans to people who are in financial problems, right? And then we're putting a lump sum of cash in their hands and not helping them invest it?
Some of the borrowers are, yes, in financial straits.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Yes, your answers actually percolate subsequent questions. So why, why the recent action last April that required families to put aside necessary dollars for taxes and...
It was a reaction to the fact that there were foreclosures because of defaulted real estate taxes.
That was stipulated by whom? The feds?
Yes.
Okay, all right then, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll now ask the clerk to read Panel Two.
Panel Two, Data and Trends on Reverse Mortgage Products in Philadelphia. Michael H. Norton, Ph.D., Chief Policy Analyst, Policy Solutions, Reinvestment Fund. Colin Weidig, Esquire, Research Analyst, Reinvestment Fund.
Thank you. Welcome.
Sure.
Please identify yourself for the record and begin your testimony. Thank you for being here.
My name is Michael Norton, I am the Chief Policy Analyst at Reinvestment Fund here in Philadelphia.
Good morning, my name's Colin Weidig, I'm a Research Analyst at Reinvestment Fund.
I'd like to start by thanking Councilwoman Parker for holding this hearing and inviting us to share some of our work on reverse mortgages here today in Philadelphia, and we're going to provide a quick 10-minute overview roughly of current trends in reverse mortgage originations, and then look at some initial patterns of foreclosure activity among reverse mortgages in Philadelphia to provide some context for understanding the current activity and sort of where there are areas for concern going forward to better understand this issue and how it's facing, how people all over this city are thinking about this. So Reinvestment Fund is a community development financial institution here in Philadelphia. We support wealth development among historically underserved populations in their communities through our lending activity, but also through our research and analysis in partnership with cities all over the country, in particular with Philadelphia, where we've been active for the past 30 years. And so initially, I'm going to provide a quick overview of some national and state trends for reverse mortgage originations, just to situate the activity that's going on here in Philadelphia. So historically, when you look at reverse mortgages, they don't really become popular until the mortgage boom at the end, at the beginning of the 21st century. So in the 90s, really, heckums are really not part of the mortgage market, but you have this huge boom during the mortgage explosion, and then after the bust in 2008, 2009, we've sort of gotten to a place where we're around 60,000 or so. So you went from zero activity before the mortgage boom to a dramatic collapse, but now sort of a new normal in terms of where reverse mortgage activity is nationally. And when you look at Pennsylvania nationally, over the past five years, they've been in the top five in terms of overall originations nationally. There has been a slight decline in the number of originations since 2013 into 2015, but Pennsylvania overall has remained very high up in terms of national rankings for reverse mortgage originations. And when you look at Philadelphia in particular, has been the largest originator of reverse mortgages in four of the last five years, and has been historically in the top, you know, 10 nationally for reverse mortgage originations. So even though we see a decline from 2012 and particularly from 2011, Philadelphia is still one of the national leaders in reverse mortgage originations all over the country. And so we're going to quickly provide an overview of reverse mortgage foreclosure activity in Philadelphia, and one of the things that's very important to consider when we're talking about reverse mortgage foreclosures is that we are looking at estimates of foreclosure activity, and these estimates were obtained by identifying foreclosures for readily identifiable reverse mortgage lenders, right? So there are some lenders that really only do reverse mortgages, so places like Generation Mortgage Company, the Financial Freedom Acquisition Organization, you can go on their websites and you can see that they only do reverse mortgages. The estimates that we're providing and sharing with you today are an undercount of the foreclosure activity that we're seeing in the reverse mortgage market, because some of the biggest banks who are, who we know are the biggest originators of reverse mortgages, to be able to readily identify reverse mortgages in the publicly available data that we examined for this preliminary analysis, we need to look a little bit deeper and to be able to sort out what types of mortgages are actually reverse mortgages that are being made by the biggest lenders. So in order to really pin down this activity in the city and nationally, we would need to do a little bit more digging into particularly the big banks and what their activity looks like for reverse mortgage lending. But when you just look at the number of foreclosures from 2010 to 2015, we have a pretty steady increase, and over the past three years, more than 100 just from these very small number of really more, reverse mortgage, people that, organizations that are specializing in reverse mortgage originations. So more than 100 a year over the past few years. Now, we're going to look at a series of maps to show where these foreclosures are taking place in the city, and so this first map shows the location of every single one of these reverse mortgage foreclosures across the different council manic districts in the city of Philadelphia. So you can see that they're spread out all over the city, there are some concentrations in West Philadelphia, in the Northwest, some down in South Philadelphia, and then out and scattered out into the Northeast and in Central North Philadelphia. So really, there are, reverse mortgage foreclosure activity is happening all over the city. And when we look at just the numbers of reverse mortgage foreclosures across the city council districts over the past three years, you see that they are distributed across all of the, all of the council manic districts with some concentrations in districts three, eight, two, and nine. Yes, go ahead.
You would know that most important slide, we're going to see that there is this slide, we just wanted you to go back, because members were still trying... We just wanted you to go back to this slide so that members could see this, because they're trying to get a snapshot of their respective district.
Perfect.
So just give us a second, if you will. Council lady?
Yes, and I have, um, I got Pennsyl, USP, Sierra Center, Science Center, Zoo, and I'm number 81. Tell me about it.
And now, this is just the foreclosures, correct?
These are just foreclosures, and foreclosures only for those lenders that specialize in reverse mortgages.
And how many reverse mortgages do we know were in, do we have a number of how many were in each district?
We would be able to go back and tell you the actual number of originations, this really just highlights the foreclosures.
I'm sorry. So, all right, so we don't know what the percentage of the people who got reverse mortgages compared to how many foreclosed?
You know what that is off the...
That's right, we're not able to identify originations by council manic district yet with the data we have currently, but there is data that we'd like to obtain that would be able to do that and tell you the rate by district.
That would be great if you could provide that to the chair, I think that would be very helpful to us.
So, this next map that we're showing you is a map of Philadelphia, and the color ramp that's on here going from light yellow to dark orange represents the median household income for block groups all over the city. And so we, what you see here is that where the reverse mortgage foreclosures are taking place are generally concentrated in those areas of the city that are on the lower end of the income spectrum, right? So concentrated in the, in North Central Philadelphia, and West Philadelphia, and places like Point Breeze, and then sort of in North Central Philadelphia. This next map is even more telling, because each of the circles represents the size of the foreclosure itself, so the amount of, the dollar amount of the reverse mortgage. And then the color ramp here is the minority, the African-American population, so going from the lowest concentrations of African-Americans in yellow to the most densely populated areas in the dark red. And then the diagonal line that you see in the Northeast are those locations where the population is over 20% Hispanic. And so what you see here is that you have very strong concentrations of the foreclosure activity in those communities that are heavily non-white communities and African-American communities. And one of the things that's really instructive about this image in particular is when you look at the really small dots, right? Because the really small dots are filings that are less than $50,000, right? And so these are reverse mortgages where people are taking out relatively small sums of money and finding themselves in foreclosure, right? So these are, there is nothing to suggest when we look at this map, and I want this to be really clear that there's any, there's no evidence to suggest that there are sort of predatory patterns in terms of the way we're seeing these, in terms of what we're seeing with these data, but the patterns that we're seeing here mimic the patterns that we've seen with the subprime mortgage lending that we saw with the housing boom, right? In terms of where they're located, in terms of the populations that are being served. So we have a couple of questions that are very important to be addressed moving forward to just really understand reverse mortgage lending in the city. So what are the most common characteristics of the borrowers and the loans that people are taking out? In particular, what are the stories that borrowers are telling about their experience in terms of the marketing that they've received, in terms of acquisition process, the education process they've gone through in actually obtaining the loan, servicing the loan, and then what it looks like when they've entered into the foreclosure process? And are, do any of their accounts suggest the presence of abusive practices, right, in the marketing and sale of these reverse mortgages? And these are live issues that are concerning for people in this room and for people living all over the, all over the city. And I'm going to close with this last slide today that just highlights those areas of the city where the population is over 60 and that their incomes are below $50,000. And so you see that these areas are all over the city, and as more and more baby boomers retire and the silver tsunami sort of washes over Philadelphia, these areas will only continue to grow, right? So this isn't an issue that's going to go away anytime soon, and the products themselves will be continued to be sold to this increasingly large population. That's all that we have for today, so we're happy to take any questions or concerns that people have. Thank you.
You said the gray is what and the purple is what on this map?
So the purple areas on this map are those block groups where there's a, where the percentage of people that are 60 or older is over...
Over 100 households that are 60 or older, and over 100 households that have income below $50,000 per year.
The gray area is non-residential, is that...
No, the gray areas are those areas where they have fewer than 100 households, so everywhere else.
So it's the purple?
It's the purple areas that are lots of people over 60, lots of people with median house, with household incomes below $50,000.
Councilman Don?
Thank you. Why do you think in 2015, Philadelphia dropped to number six from being number one for three or four years?
We don't know why that would be. It'd be something we'd have to look at more closely, and it may be because in other cities it's becoming increasingly popular, but we just have to look at sort of the overall origination trend, which we didn't look at today, but we'd have to get a little bit more data just to look at the number of originations, because it could be the case that we're staying relatively steady and that other people are bumping up, could be that we have a little bit of a dip, we just don't know.
And doesn't the fact that Philadelphia, I think, is only two cities in the country out of 20 that have homeownership rates over 50%? Philadelphia's like 51. So doesn't that also attribute to the fact that there will be more reverse mortgages here because we have the equity to do it?
Well, we certainly, there is a population that exists that is, that can actually consume the product, right? So you do have a large number of them, and the fact that Philadelphia is high is also a byproduct of it being a large city as well, right? That is high homeowner.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, in essence, you literally just gave us a snapshot that you were able to compile from data readily available to the TRF and prep for this hearing so that council could get a quick overview of what the presence of reverse mortgages looks like in the city of Philadelphia. So I have two questions for you to follow up on, a question Councilwoman Reynolds Brown just asked via sidebar, and one from Councilwoman, Councilman Squiller earlier. How long would it take the Reinvestment Fund to conduct a detailed analysis answering many of the questions that were asked today, so that we can have an accurate overview of the presence of this product in the, in the city of Philadelphia? You're sort of listing all of the borrowers, so we know who they are, the borrowers, the number of foreclosures, the lenders, so everything that we wanted to know. How long would it take you to put that data together?
It's a question that I can't immediately answer on the spot without knowing exactly sort of what the...
The scope, but I mean, just generally, I guess what I'm leaning, I'm doing what my sorority would call leaning on the shield right now. You've given us a reason to want this data for the entire city, and to want it, sort of, not just from an aggregate perspective, but we, but we would want it disaggregated by council district. So how long did it take you to do this?
I would say this was the work of a couple weeks, but this is kind of looking at one side of the issue, we're looking at the foreclosure, the sort of the end of the lifecycle of some of these loans. What we'd like to look at is the origination side, where we would go into the recorder of deeds records and really look at where are these loans being made, what time period were they made, and then we would link the two to be able to show, for example, the councilman's question about the mortality rate in the different districts. So then we would get a much fuller picture. So I think that's the work of, you know, a few months, I would say.
A few, okay, thank you, that's what we needed to sort of get on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. No further questions, we'll go to Panel Three. I'm sorry, Councilman Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, I'm not able to stay for the entire hearing, but I want to commend you and Councilman Parker for putting together this conversation. Having had some experiences as both a banker and also working for the Law Department, representing OHC D, and being the board president at Center Park, some of the issues that were just articulated by this presentation are things I've had some assumptions about, some concerns, because the city of Philadelphia has had a large rate of homeownership, but also a high level of poverty, and knowing the growing senior population we have in the city, this issue of reverse mortgages going to foreclosure was something I had some assumptions about, I think this is really the tip of the iceberg. So I really want to commend both the chair and Councilman Parker for bringing up this conversation, and we can take steps to help our constituents address this issue going forward. So thank you.
Thank you, I'd like to take credit for it, because Councilwoman did such a great job, but I'm only convening the here... job, but I'm only convening the hearing. I've shared the Finance Committee. She did all the work. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Panel three?
Panel three, Senior Law Center Attorneys and Client. Elizabeth P. Shea Esquire, Coordinator of the Homeowners Assistance Program. Wendy Bookler Esquire, Legal Director. Brenda Myers, Reverse Mortgage Borrower and Senior Law Center Client.
Thank you. Welcome. We're very happy to have you. Please introduce yourself to the record and begin your testimony. Thank you.
Good morning. So, I'm Beth Shea. I coordinate the Homeowners Assistance Program at Senior Law Center, and I'm so pleased to be here to talk about what we've been seeing on the ground with reverse mortgages in the city of Philadelphia. How did we get here? How did Senior Law Center come to be at the forefront of the Philadelphia reverse mortgage problem? First, through our OHCD-funded triage program in the Mortgage Foreclosure Diversion Court. Seniors come there who have been sued for foreclosure every Thursday. In-person, we give in-person counseling and advice on reverse mortgage foreclosure lawsuits. Seniors with reverse mortgage problems also come to us through our telephone helpline operating throughout the Commonwealth, through our Aging Services Network that effectively responds to legal needs of seniors in all Philadelphia neighborhoods, and through our eight neighborhood legal clinics. Seniors are regularly sent to Senior Law Center by state representative offices, city council offices, Philadelphia Corporation for Aging, OHCD, clergy networks, and Housing Counseling Agency. Philadelphia seniors contacted Senior Law Center 22 times in 2013 about problems with reverse mortgage. In 2014, that jumped to 47, and in 2015, the number was 55. So, we've seen a two-and-a-half times increase in the number of complaints since 2013. In just the past 18 months, we've responded to 102 reverse mortgage complaints, which have come to us from all neighborhoods in the city. However, we note that 13% of our reverse mortgage inquiries have come from the 1-9-1-4-3 ZIP code. So, what have we learned from the reverse mortgages from these 102 cases? First, the reverse mortgage product is not being accurately explained and understood by our clients. Second, widows and widowers are often needlessly losing their homes when the borrowing spouse dies. Heirs are losing the family home because servicers foreclose rather than assist with refinancing. Third, mortgage servicers are not using their HUD authorized discretion to evaluate reverse mortgage borrowers for repayment plans when estate tax, excuse me, when real estate taxes or homeowner insurance premiums become delinquent, preferring instead to call the mortgage due and payable and sue for foreclosure, taking the home from the borrowers. Fourth, repair contractors and reverse mortgage lenders often working together intentionally confuse seniors, convincing them to give up the equity in their homes in order to finance home repairs, which are often not completed or shoddy. So, now let's go a little bit into each one of these issues. The first, reverse mortgage product is not accurately explained and understood by seniors. As the prior two panels have described, this is a problem. A reverse mortgage is complex financial product being advertised on late-night TV and in neighborhood and grocery store newspapers. Most seniors understand they don't have to repay the loans during their lifetime, but few appreciate, and most are shocked to discover that upon their death, the loan balance will have skyrocketed with the inclusion of monthly fees, interest charges, and mortgage insurance premiums, and that their children and grandchildren will have to pay this debt if they hope to continue living in the family home. In many cases, cheaper financing alternatives were available and never considered by the senior because the reverse mortgage seemed like such a great idea. Number two, widows and widowers are often needlessly losing their homes when the borrowing spouse dies, and heirs are losing the family home because servicers foreclose rather than assist with refinancing. If a married reverse borrower took out a loan before August of 2014 without including his wife on the mortgage, when he later dies, his wife is likely to lose her right to remain in the home. Why? Because before August of 2014, reverse mortgages make the loan due and payable upon the death of the borrower. While this mortgage condition has been found to violate federal law, mortgage companies are regularly sending notices to widows, threatening them with foreclosure if they do not pay off the entire loan balance. A federal judge ordered HUD to correct the problem, protect the widows, but so far, HUD's solution has been to leave the method of solving the problem up to the mortgage servicers. The mortgage company gets to decide whether to work with the widow and possibly assign the loan to HUD, or foreclose the loan and take back the family home. Senior Law Center, Community Legal Services, and Philadelphia Legal Assistance have been working hard to advocate for non-borrowing widows with HUD and the servicers in order to save the home, but we fear the percentage of widows who actually get to a legal services attorney is very small. Most widows who receive a letter telling them that the loan is now due may walk away from the home, totally unaware they had another option. And it's not just widows of deceased reverse mortgage borrowers who are being mistreated, but also children and grandchildren of the deceased borrower. The federal government protects these heirs by providing that they can purchase the property from the reverse mortgage company for the lesser of the amount owed on the mortgage, or 95% of the property's fair market value. Servicers exploit this situation by either refusing to negotiate with heirs and suing to foreclose the loan, or by inflating property appraisals and failing to negotiate with heirs in good faith. Number three, mortgage servicers are not using their HUD authorized discretion to evaluate reverse mortgage borrowers for repayment plans when real estate taxes or homeowner's insurance premiums become delinquent, preferring instead to call the mortgage due and payable and sue for foreclosure. Reverse mortgage contracts require the buyer, borrower to live in the property, pay the taxes as they become due, keep the property insured, and maintain the property in good repair. A failure to satisfy any of these conditions can result in the mortgage company threatening foreclosure. In the past, if the problem was non-payment of taxes or insurance, the mortgage company typically paid the expense and sent, paid the expense and sent a bill to the borrower. If the borrower could not repay the money the mortgage company had advanced, the servicer would offer an affordable monthly repayment plan. However, HUD's repayment policy changed in April 2015, and the government began insisting that servicers either get immediate lump sum repayment from the borrower, or sue to foreclose the loan. The harshness of this new policy as applied to Philadelphia borrowers was highlighted by Senior Law Center, CLS, and PLA in a recent meeting with HUD in Washington, DC. We showed that our clients were willing and able to repay the money advanced under the rules in effect before April of 2015, and that the change in repayment terms by HUD with no advance warning meant our clients would lose their homes. We also explained that our clients were eligible for Philadelphia real estate tax installment agreements, which permit them to pay their taxes over the course of the year, so that while technically these homeowners may have been tax delinquent as of March 31, the city would not levy any fines, interest, or penalties as long as they complied with their payment agreements. By opting in and paying the taxes in April and demanding immediate repayment from homeowners, the servicers were eviscerating the Philadelphia Tax Assistance Program, which is meant to help struggling low-income homeowners stay in their home. Number four, repair contractors and reverse mortgage lenders working together often intentionally confuse seniors and convince them to give up the equity in their homes in order to finance home repairs, which are often not completed or shoddily performed. So, two statistics make it clear why Philadelphia seniors are the target of aggressive reverse mortgage lenders. First, of the 127,000 Philadelphia properties inhabited by somebody over the age of 65, 63% have no mortgage. That's 80,000 homes sitting on a top of a mountain of equity. Second, half of these homes, approximately 63,500, were built before 1950 and can be presumed to need significant repair and upkeep. When surveyed, 75,300 Philadelphia seniors reported that their homes are in need of major repair. When we take into account that one in five older Philadelphia homeowners lives in poverty, the challenge of how to maintain the homes in a safe and habitable condition comes into focus. As the need for repair grows, so does financial exploitation by repair contractors, often teamed up with overly aggressive marketing efforts by reverse mortgage lenders. Beginning in 2009, senior law, excuse me, seniors began complaining to senior law about high-pressure solicitation by repair contractors who introduced them to reverse mortgage brokers and helped them get financing arranged so repairs could be made, often with unsatisfactory results. Many of these seniors said they never intended to put a mortgage on their home, but rather they believed they were taking out a loan which they would repay over time. These are complex financial transactions, often misunderstood by the senior homeowner, and in some cases appear to include fraudulent collusive activity by contractors and mortgage brokers. Senior Law Center responded by forming practice groups with two Philadelphia law firms to investigate and sue these contractors and reverse mortgage brokers. Currently, there are 15 teams of volunteer attorneys at these firms handling contractor fraud litigation. You'll hear from Brenda Myers, sitting here, a senior law center client, who was contacted by a contractor knocking on her door, offering to repair her home. The contractor proposed to finance the repairs with a reverse mortgage. We believe this sort of door-to-door solicitation happens throughout Philadelphia by contractors who claim to have looked at the house and convinced the homeowner that urgent repairs are needed. Since approximately 75,000 Philadelphians aged 65 and older live alone, they are easy targets for this sort of financial exploitation. Okay, so, we're wrapping up. So, what can be done? Senior Law Center proposes the following. Number one, city council should fund an education campaign targeted towards seniors and their families, explaining the dangers and risks of reverse mortgages, describing alternative financing possibilities, and spreading the news about city and state-sponsored property tax relief programs, home repair programs, and low-cost homeowners insurance. Senior Law Center and OHCD have begun planning for these educational forums. Seniors already in reverse mortgages must be informed of the right to ask their mortgage company for a repayment plan if they fall behind on their property taxes and insurance charges. And widows and widowers must be told they have a right to remain in the house after the borrower's death, and the steps they must take to protect this right. Number two, city council should work with HUD to put in place a system which ensures that the Philadelphia tax programs meant to protect low-income Philadelphia seniors are protected by mortgage servicers, and the servicers refrain from paying tax bills upfront, which are the subject of city-sponsored installment agreements with homeowners. City council must work with the Pennsylvania Attorney General to enforce the protections provided in the Home Improvement Consumer Protection Act against home repair contractors who routinely violate the law by demanding excessive down payments, fail to provide a copy of the repair contract to the consumer, take money from seniors, and perform no work, incomplete or shoddy work. City council should work with the Pennsylvania Department of Banking to stop the marketing of reverse mortgages by home repair contractors and to stop door-to-door reverse mortgage solicitation. Council should increase home retention funds distributed by the Office of Support of Housing to permit more seniors faced with foreclosure due to unpaid taxes and insurance premiums to save their homes. And last, city council should work with HUD to expand the protections put in place before a senior can enter into a reverse mortgage transaction. For instance, all documents should be in large print. Borrowers should have a waiting period between delivery of the documents and the date they have to sign and close on the loan. So, these are efforts to save senior homes made by Senior Law Center and the other legal services agencies, which bring tangible results. But we need city councils' financial support so we can continue to help people in the communities where they live, so that seniors are kept safe and independent in their lifelong community, stabilizing neighborhoods, preventing additional vacancies, and stopping blight. Senior Law Center is a small, well-established legal service agency conducting outreach in all city neighborhoods. Our work makes a large impact on the lives of seniors and upon the communities in which they live. We hope to do much more for seniors in our community in partnership with city council in the future. We are well-positioned to respond to the crises as they develop in the senior community in Philadelphia. Housing is the number-one issue facing Philadelphia seniors, and the idea of aging in place becomes not a dream but a nightmare if the houses become inhabitable, after seniors are defrauded by shoddy or dishonest home repair contractors, or if homes are foreclosed upon due to delinquent real estate taxes, or delinquent mortgages, or if they're stolen through fraudulent deeds. Our city had the state, our city and state had the foresight to create programs and protections for seniors, but funding for legal services is critical and essential if seniors are to be able to access these protections. Meanwhile, Senior Law Center struggles to meet the increasing legal needs of seniors. We ask city council to recognize the special needs of senior homeowners, including the critical role of legal services in protecting their rights. City council's support and partnership is tremendously meaningful and appreciated by the elders of our community, to whom we all owe our respect, attention, and gratitude. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person would like to testify?
Yes, sir. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Wendy Bookler. I'm the Legal Director at Senior Law Center, and I'm not going to repeat any of the wonderful things that Beth just said about who we are and the work we do, but I'm here with your permission to help Ms. Myers tell her story to you. So...
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm kind of slow in speaking, but I'm glad to be here and testify because what mortgage, mortgage company, you know, doing to city, city citizens is, I'm going to tell my part of the story. Okay.
So, Ms. Myers, can you tell us how this started?
Okay, it started, okay, a man was walking up the, you know, back off, off the block, you know, asking everybody in the neighborhood, you know, do they need work on their house? And I said, yeah, you know? He said, well, I know a person that are going to help you, you know, finesse, get the, you know, get the, repair, repairs fixed. I said, oh, that's good, you know, sound good, you know? Okay. I think about, a week later, this lady came, and she was saying...
Hold on a second. Let's go back a second, okay? So, did the man ask you how old you were?
Oh, oh, no, no, no. He didn't ask me, you asked me for, oh, I was.
And how old were you at the time?
I was 61.
You were 61. And so, what did he say to you at that time?
He said, I had to be 62. I had to be 62.
Right. And so, he, did he ask you for your birthday?
Yes, he did. Asked me for my birthday, so I told him in May 6th, May 2nd, 50.
And so, did he tell you at that time that they would come back when you turned 62?
Yes.
Okay. And then what happened once you turned 62?
Goodness, lady came, and she had some papers, you know, and she, okay, the documents she had, I couldn't see that good, you know, because she had the, the reading was so small, you know, I couldn't read it. So, she read it to me. And she was telling me that, okay, this contractor was going to come and fix, you know, all the, remodel my house and everything, you know? So, I took her word, took her word, you know? And then she, then, then, this, the contract didn't come, didn't come. I was...
Let's go back a second. So, when she came to your house and showed you the papers, did she give you an opportunity to read them? to read them?
No.
Did she give you a copy of them?
No.
She did not? And did you sign them?
Yes, I signed.
And did you understand at that time what you were signing?
No, no.
So what did you think would happen at that point?
That I was getting a loan, you know, for the contractor to fix the, remodel the house.
And what was the work that the contractor was going to do in your house?
Okay, going to put the heater in, fix the heater, and the bathroom.
What was he going to do in the bathroom?
Okay, I'm going to remodel the bathroom. I'm going to put a shower and everything in there, you know, I'm going to remodel bathroom.
And did you understand when you signed the papers that you were signing a mortgage for $35,000?
No, no.
You didn't understand that?
No.
So did you think, where did you think the money was going to come from to help do these repairs?
I thought I was going to get the money, you know.
You thought that she was going to give you the money?
And now I'm going to pick a contractor myself, you know, you know.
And did you ever get any money?
No.
You didn't get any money?
No.
So did it go straight to the contractor?
Straight to, yeah.
It went straight to the contractor? And did the woman from the, the woman who came with the papers know the man who was the contractor?
She said, well, she says he knows, he knows somebody, so I guess they knew each other.
So he sent her to you?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, did you just think that they were going to give you the money and that would be the end of it? It was like a gift? Or what did you think would happen?
No, it wasn't a gift or nothing like that. I thought it was the remodel of my house. That's what I, that's what I really believed, you know, with her word. I took her word because she said, I was going to get the money. I was going to get, I was going to pay for the contractor, get the work done, and that's why I took her word.
And so, did she tell you there was going to be money left over after the contractor did the work?
Yes.
And what was that money going to go to do?
Oh, I want to pay off that loan. I want to keep on paying off the loan.
So he was going to do the work, you were going to pay him, and then with the money that was left, you were going to repay the loan? And you thought you would pay that loan back how often?
How often?
Like any other loan? Like a monthly payment you would make?
Yeah, monthly payment. Because I haven't took out loans before.
And you always paid them back, right? Okay. So did you ever get any money from them at all?
No.
Okay.
No.
And did you understand at the time that you were giving away your house, basically?
No, I didn't know. If I knew I was giving away my house, I wouldn't have signed it. I wouldn't have signed it.
So did you own your home free and clear at that time?
Oh, yes, all free, yeah.
And so what were your expect-
All the thing I'm doing is taxes and-
Sorry, go ahead.
Taxes and water bill.
Taxes and water bill was the only thing you had to pay? And your utilities, right?
Yeah, you know.
But no mortgage payment at all? Right, okay. So at that time, did you have homeowner's insurance on your home?
No, no.
Did you ever have that?
No.
How come? Any particular reason?
Because the house wasn't really, you know, well, I say wasn't fit, wasn't fit to, you know, have insurance, you know, or thing. That's why I want the house remodeled, to have, you know, make the fire insurance, you know, and everything, you know.
Right. So Ms. Myers, did you tell me that your monthly income is about $700 a month? And so is part of the reason that you didn't have homeowner's insurance is because you couldn't afford it?
Right, right.
So how do you feel now about the fact that you signed these papers?
I felt I was cheated. I was cheated because I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have never signed away my house. I would never sign away from my house.
Just take a moment. Are you okay to go on? So Ms. Myers, did the contractor come to your house and do any work?
It didn't, it was-
Okay, we're going to wait a moment if you don't mind. Just take a moment.
It was, okay, the work he said he did, when I, when I went over what he had did, it was messed up, and the shower was leaking, the water, you know, kept running, kept running.
So he put a new shower in for you?
Yeah.
Do you feel able to go on?
Thank you.
Can you feel able to go on?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so he put a new shower in for you, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And did that shower work well?
At the beginning, yes, it did.
And then what happened?
It started leaking.
Leaking in the bathroom or leaking?
Leaking in the bathroom. The floor was, started leaking in the kitchen, you know, and then the water wouldn't turn off.
The water just kept running?
Like a drip, like a drip.
And did it drip down into your kitchen?
Yes, it did. Yes, it did.
It did. Okay. And then you also said that he was going to put in a new hot water heater?
Yeah, the church gave the hot water tank, and they were, they said they were going to put it in for me.
And did they put that in?
They put that in.
And that worked okay?
Yes.
And how about the fact that he was going to help you make the heat in your house work? Did he fix that?
No.
So the heat still doesn't work correctly?
No.
Okay. So did he ever, did you tell him that you were unhappy with the work he did?
They told me, stopped calling.
They told you to stop calling them?
Yeah.
Okay. And how about the lady who you borrowed the money from? Did you at some point call her and ask her about repaying the loan?
She even told me not to stop calling because it wasn't none of her business, you know, what, I mean, nothing she can do what the contractor did.
Okay. So she told you not to call her and the contractor told you not to call her? And were you ever able to recover any of the money that was spent to do the repairs in your house?
No.
Did Senior Law Center help you out with?
Yes, they got me, they told me how to get on the tax budget, you know.
Well, they did, did Senior Law Center help you get some money from the contractor?
With the money back from the contractor, yeah.
And did you get all the money back or just a little bit?
No, no, little bit, little bit.
Just a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay, so the contractor never fixed the work, and then a couple of years later, you started to have another problem with your home, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's when they start saying that I owe, the living, well, I can give the living.
So the lender?
The lender, you know, money, and I couldn't, I couldn't, and so the church, you know, took a donation for, for me, you know, and paid off debt.
So the money that the lender said you owed, was that for homeowner's insurance and for your taxes?
For the taxes, for the insurance and for the taxes, yeah.
So let's talk about your taxes for a minute. Was Senior Law Center able to help you get into an agreement to pay your taxes to the city?
Yes, and I paid my agreement on time.
You pay them every month, right? And you, before we got you into that agreement, you were up to date on your taxes, right? You told me you always pay your taxes on time, correct?
Right.
So you had this agreement in place, and then what happened? The mortgage company paid them anyway?
Yeah, yeah, they put it, and that's, they paid it anyway, and then they charged me, and that's when they put their enclosure in my house.
They, foreclosure?
Foreclosure in my house.
So did they also pay money for your homeowner's insurance for you?
Yes.
And then they sued you because?
Because I didn't pay them, they said I didn't refund them back.
They said they paid the money in advance and you had to pay them back?
Right.
Okay. So how did you get into an agreement with the mortgage company? You started to say about the people at your church. What did they do?
Oh, they took up a donation, a donation, and then when they took up the donation and I, I made money order and gave it to them, you know, so.
And so you were able to stay in your home?
Stay here at that time, yeah, with y'all help.
So let me ask you a question. What did you think would happen to your home when you couldn't live there anymore or if you passed away?
Well, I, I thought my daughter was going to, you know, but now I found out the mortgage company wanted to get it.
And so you didn't understand that at the time you took out the mortgage?
No.
So let me just ask you one final question. What do you think of reverse mortgages?
They cheat people. They cheat people, and I think they need to stop, stop doing it. And explain better to people, you know, what they do, what is up, you know?
Yes.
Because a lot of people wouldn't have signed, I know I wouldn't have signed it, you know, my house away, because my house was nine anyway, you know?
Yes, it was. So we'd like to thank you for being here today and for being brave. This is a hard thing to do, and I think you're telling your story. Thank you.
God bless you. Bless you all. We are so, so, so sorry, and we know this happens too often. Any questions or concerns? Blondell Reynolds Brown?
On the record, because I have an 88-year-old mom that I take care of along with my sisters, and we've been able to protect her, be the additional listener, eyes and ears for documents that come her way. And we do, first of all, to the Senior Law Center, you do exceptionally important, exceedingly good work. And that is, that is reflected in the testimony that's just been offered. I applaud you for your courage. It takes, it takes a woman with a strong back to sit in that seat and reveal to us how ugly this issue is. And so the outcome, the final chapter of your story is what? Tell me, Senior Law Center, the status as we sit here for-
Ms. Myers?
Well, they helped, senior city, you know, they helped real good, helped me because really, really, the mortgage company would get ready to take my house. I didn't, I didn't know, because they would, they send me all these things to pay off and that, that's when I say was, and then say, don't talk to them, don't call them, that I knew something was wrong. That's when I got in touch with this citizen.
Well, you have what my mother would call common sense. You weren't feeling right, and so you picked up the phone to get some help. So God bless you in that way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yeah, so thank you, you know, for your, for your testimony, and Ms. Myers, thank you for, for your courage and, and your strength today. The hope is that the testimony that you've put on the record and by sharing your story, that you can help us work with the federal and state officials who are in this room to come up with ways that we can help prevent someone else in the future from having the kind of experience that you shared today. So you were a trailblazer here today, sharing your story, and, and we appreciate that. I want to ask to the Senior Law Project, what you've described today to a certain degree is a disturbing pattern of contractor fraud in essence. So contractor fraud related directly to the reverse mortgage. Are there any particular laws on the books that can deal with this? And I saw your recommendations in your testimony, and they are all duly noted, but is there anything that you want to get on the record today about the coziness of this relationship or the co-mingling of it?
Yeah. So we've raised the issue with the U.S. Attorney's Office here in Philadelphia, and we've been in touch with the Pennsylvania Attorney General. I'm not sure where the dividing line falls between legal and illegal bundling of mortgages and repair work. So we turned it over to the ones that know more of that. The two law firms, the practice groups that we have, they are the ones who are doing the cases with the mortgage companies and the reverse, the reverse mortgage companies and the contractors, and they are the ones that have conducted the forensic audits and looked into the tie-ins. And it's through those litigations that we've found that there seems to be this activity that is too closely bundled, and they find bad mortgage brokers as a part of the transaction.
And if I could say one more thing? We have also been working with the U.S. Attorney's Office in the case of a particular contractor who seems to come up over and over again in these cases. So we are working with other law enforcement.
I just wanted to state for the record, because again, I started this, and this was extremely important, and the reason why I said it when we opened this hearing was to sort of demonstrate lessons learned. That's why we have our federal and our state partners here at this hearing today so that they can hear this testimony firsthand. So I wanted to just thank for the record again, U.S. Senator Casey's office, U.S. Congressman Bob Brady, HUD, particularly our AG's office, who is here along with PHFA. We, as you can see, we are not under the belief that city council has the authority, you know, to, to bring together all of the remedies and solutions that we're going to need in order to find a way to fix these problems, but we will do it from an intergovernmental perspective, and the contractor issue is one that we will definitely be working on. The AG's office is like writing notes now, you know, perturbed by this, so I'm sure they will get our state AG's office along with the U.S. Attorney's Office. They'll talk with you afterwards specifically about that. So thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Heenan. Bob Heenan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam, thank you for, as you know, my colleague Blondell Reynolds Brown said, your courage to come in here, and I commend you on that. It must be so difficult to share your experience, and I, you know, I want to thank the CLS for the way they were able to shepherd and present to us your horrific story. And I can't even imagine how quick and how lonely and desperate you must have felt with being taken advantage of. And I'm going to say, I'm going to go out on a limb and say it's outright, you know, not only morally wrong, but it's, it's, there's collusion, and it's unethical, and it's just illegal for, for somebody to take advantage of somebody. Thank God you had, you know, a family of church, you know, that was there for you, and you knew where to go. Most people, I would imagine, are by themselves and that are alone, and they may not have that kind of, you know, family or network. So, you know, your story is going to be there for them. And I hope that everybody that's listening here can get the message out to all the constituency groups and all their churches in their neighborhoods to be on the lookout for this scam, because that's what it is. And, you know, you have an illegal team that is handling these cases, or your case and others, and we should tell the story everywhere and every location where there's an opportunity to get in front of people, to let them know about scams, I guess. And anybody that comes to your house, you know, selling something that looks like a duck and walks like a duck, it's a duck, all right? It's a scam, and we should be, we should be made aware of it. Now, I know that, you know, from a legal, you know, point of view, that, you know, they're governed, all right? These banks are governed by different regulations. I don't know if they're federal regulations or, but they are governed by banking regulations with the federal government. And even with HUD loans, all right, the lender or consultants that are offered to individuals to help with these programs, it's illegal for them, and it's unethical for them, all right, to refer contractors. So when they get digged down to this, they'll find out that it's not just a common contractor or two that's consistent across the board, all right, that it's, you know, there's collusion with some of the lenders, all right, that are doing the referrals. So, you know, keep up the good work. You're going to help a lot of people, and I'm glad you were here today, and thank you for your courage.
Thank you very much. Thank you, colleagues. We thank God that God is God, and that you can have a good church and you got good senior folks, Law Center, who are doing the right thing, and you were directed to them. So we thank you all. You're probably in my area if your zip code's 43. So we need to try to, I'll get to general area, maybe we can let people in the area know that there are bogus folks going around trying to deal with seniors. So I'll ask you after, if maybe you all can tell me at Lisa Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I just wanted to join with my colleagues in saying how outraged I am with the way you were treated, and I take personal offense to it. And, you know, I'm happy that your situation has worked out. However, we know that for so many others, the situation doesn't work out. And we saw from the, you know, from the maps that were provided earlier, you know, there's a large population of folks, seniors, who have been caught up in this, as I call it, a scam, and the situation has not worked out. They've lost their homes, and they've worked their entire lives to build this foundation. And so I take a personal- And so, I take a personal offense to it. I would like to know, and you can either speak on the record or off the record, who the contractor is. I would like to have that information. Because one of the things that we can do, and if you're in Councilwoman Blackwell's district, I know that she's someone to definitely follow up on this in terms of who the contractor is, and what permits, licenses, you know, are they in order? We need to know. We need to know how they're operating and how they're conducting business. Because as members of city council, it's also our responsibility to protect our public and our constituents. So, we would like to have that information made available. Thank you.
I don't think we're going to be in a position to put that on the record today.
Okay, but off the record?
Yes.
That's fine.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you again. God bless you all. Panel four?
Panel four. Community Legal Services Attorneys and Clients. Peter D. Schneider, Esquire Supervising Attorney, Consumer Unit. Michael Froelich, Esquire Managing Attorney, Home Ownership and Consumer Rights Unit. Ms. Ruth Guerrero, South Philadelphia Resident and Homeowner and CLS Client.
Good morning.
Morning.
And thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell, and Councilwoman Parker, and the rest of the committee for having us. My name is Peter Schneider. I'm a supervising attorney in the Home Ownership and Consumer Rights Unit at Community Legal Services. And I'm happy to have the opportunity to speak about the impact of reverse mortgage products in Philadelphia. Before I speak, I'd like to turn the mic over to Ruth Guerrero. She's one of our clients, and she's going to speak about her experience.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Ruth Guerrero. I am 70 years old. I'm a retired hairdresser, a widow, a mother of two sons, and a grandmother to two granddaughters. My husband was 23 years older than me. And in Italian culture, the wife usually follows the husband's lead on most things. Especially because of the age difference, I usually went along with him. Because he was a good man, I know in my heart he never anticipated this kind of repercussion because he would have never wanted to hurt me deliberately. In 2007, my husband Al and I purchased our house in South Philadelphia together. A short time after we moved in, Al asked me to take my name off the house and put it in his name only, so he could get the taxes cheaper somehow. I did it without question. What I did not know is that my husband had taken out a reverse mortgage. Less than four months after he died in 2012, the mortgage company sued me to foreclosure on my house. I did not know anything about a reverse mortgage, still not sure how they work. So, you could imagine how shocked I was to hear I was going to lose my house. In my heart, I know this process was not explained well enough for him to understand fully all the things that are happening to me now. My home was scheduled to be sold at sheriff's sale last year, but my attorney at Community Legal Services helped me get the sale postponed. Finally, the mortgage company offered to drop the foreclosure complaint, but only if I was able to come up with $13,800. I was able to come up with some of this money, but not the entire amount. At this point, I don't know what is going to happen to my house. I live each day with the uncertainty that I will lose it to foreclosure. Please make sure to tell anyone who is considering these kinds of loans all the facts, so they don't find themselves in the situation that I am in right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Guerrero.
I'm going to now give some of the context for what Ms. Guerrero testified about. As the city's largest provider of free legal services, Community Legal Services assists more than 11,600 of Philadelphia's poorest residents with their legal problems each year. And our Home Ownership and Consumer Rights Unit represents approximately 600 homeowners every year dealing with the potential loss of their homes. And among these are homeowners like Ms. Guerrero with reverse mortgages. We represent homeowners in a number of ways. We work with the city's diversion program and foreclosure court to attempt to negotiate solutions where that's possible. Where that's not possible, we will litigate cases through the Court of Common Pleas and in appeals from the Court of Common Pleas. And sometimes, we will file an affirmative consumer protection suit on the homeowner's behalf. One example of that is the case of Plunkett versus Castro, which was a case filed in the U.S. Federal Court in the District of Columbia, originally filed by the litigation arm of the AARP. We worked closely with the AARP's counsel and moved to intervene in that case on behalf of a Philadelphia homeowner who was faced with the loss of her home because of a reverse mortgage. And as I'll discuss shortly, that case was resolved with a landmark change of HUD policy that often allows surviving spouses to remain in their homes. Ms. Guerrero's, her case is a situation in which she's been helped by that new HUD program, but the help may or may not be enough. We don't know at this point. So, today I'll speak about some of the recent legal changes in the reverse mortgage landscape. These changes have addressed some of the problems that some of the other people who've testified today have spoken about, but they don't always go far enough, and they don't by any means solve all the problems that reverse mortgage homeowners face. One of the problems which you've heard about is the problem of counseling. We've heard that homeowners go into reverse mortgages without enough education or understanding of how these products work. The counseling process is regulated by HUD. Counselors follow a protocol and are not able to deviate in significant respects from that protocol, which is part of the problem that you asked about previously. And there's a great, great need for borrowers and borrowers' families to have better information about these products. Part of the problems have been created because until recently, reverse mortgages were approved without regard to the borrower's credit. This made reverse mortgages available to borrowers with poor credit or no credit who could not otherwise qualify for a loan, but it created a cascade of other problems. Some seniors obtained reverse mortgages without the financial ability to maintain their property afterwards or without the financial ability to pay their required property tax and insurance. And this has led to default and foreclosure when the required repairs or the payments haven't been made. As Clarify explained in their testimony, HUD recently, in 2014 and 2015, changed many of the underwriting guidelines for these loans. They now require a credit history analysis, which includes an assessment of the mortgage's experience paying taxes and insurance. And where the credit history does not show the ability to meet future financial obligations, there's now a fully required life expectancy set aside that is required. This is designed to ensure that funds will be available, if needed, to pay for repairs or property charges like taxes or insurance. But existing homeowners who are in existing reverse mortgages do not have that set aside and are not protected by it. And as a result, are in the situation where they often learn late in the game that they are responsible for paying taxes and insurance. Often, especially if a prior mortgage company paid those taxes and insurance for them, homeowners don't realize that once they get their reverse mortgage, they are required to pay these, make these payments themselves. When they don't make these payments, because they don't know that they're supposed to, the mortgage company then disperses for them and requires repayment. I'll discuss some of the details of that a little bit later.
Okay. We certainly want to thank you and certainly say to Ms. Guerrero, we're very, very sorry for your trouble. And we thank you very, very important testimony. And thank God they found their way to you. We appreciate that. Is Mr. Michael Froelich, Esquire, here?
Yes, he's here.
I'll waive my testimony in favor of the college.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We thank you. And we're happy to support you in any way we need to.
Councilwoman, would you like me to continue?
Yeah, so why don't we, if you can, I know you wanted to get to part two. And, excuse me. We know you still had to get to part two and part three. We will make sure that the stenographer has all of the testimony for the record. But why don't you just tell us what our last two points are and very specific issues that we want to get addressed?
Sure. The second point has to do with protecting surviving spouses like Ms. Guerrero from foreclosure when the borrowing spouse dies. HUD has come up with programs that protect surviving spouses now from automatic displacement when the borrower dies. But there are problems with HUD's solution. The implementation is within the discretion of the servicers, and borrowers or surviving spouses don't always learn about their new protections in time to avail of them. And then there are details that can cause serious problems. HUD requires that the surviving spouse have an established legal ownership of the property. Yet, the timeframe for obtaining that legal ownership of the property through doing probate sometimes, or whatever else is required, is not always enough time to be able to do things within HUD's deadlines. And then, taxes and insurance that may be due has to be paid in a lump sum in order for a surviving spouse to be eligible for these protections. And the ability to do that is often nonexistent. Homeowners cannot come up with that money that quickly in that amount, and they're not going to be able to save their home if they can't do that. So, that's my second point. It's explained in more detail in my prepared testimony. My third point has to do with the requirements to pay taxes and insurance. Senior Law Center has gone into this in some detail, and there's no reason for me to have to repeat all the things that they've said other than to emphasize that the repayment agreements that HUD has authorized, reverse mortgage lenders to offer to homeowners often requires payments that are beyond a homeowner's ability to pay and does not allow homeowners to take advantage of the city's protections for payment of taxes over time. So, that's a very, very quick summary of the points. There is more detail in the written testimony. And I appreciate very much the council members' consideration of these important, important issues.
Thank you very much. And I apologize for missing the end of that. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will the clerk read panel five?
Panel five. Office of Housing and Community Development, Melissa Long, Deputy Director of Housing. Philadelphia City Council, Nance Haver, Director of Civic Engagement. Bernadette Prater, Center in the Park. And Rhonda Lancaster.
Rhonda Lancaster, I think that is. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify? Thank you very much. So, this will be our final panel, and we thank you all for your patience. Thank you very much. Ms. Long, you can identify yourself if you're ready. Thanks. And Lance, thank you.
I may switch chairs. I'm kind of sunk.
Okay.
It's all right. I'm fine. I'll wait.
I'm short. Last name Long, short.
That's much better. Good afternoon, Chairman Blackwell, Councilwoman Parker, and members of the Finance Committee. I'm Melissa Long, Deputy Director of the City's Office of Housing and Community Development. And I apologize, I have a little cold, so I don't... Since you've already heard the very valuable testimony from housing and legal counseling agencies, the reinvestment fund, and the courageous testimony of Ms. Myers and Ms. Guerrero, thank you very much. We appreciate that. I will focus on the steps that the city has already taken to assist residents with reverse mortgages and the steps that we have planned in the near future. As many of you know, OHCD funds 26 housing counseling agencies around the city. These agencies have been key players in the city's foreclosure prevention efforts, which to date have saved nearly 10,000 homes from foreclosure. Three of these agencies, the Philadelphia Senior Center, Center in the Park, and Inner Community Action, focus specifically on the housing counseling needs of senior citizens, including reverse mortgages. And our agencies are seeing an increase in clients facing foreclosure due to reverse mortgages. We have already seen in FY 2016 roughly the same number of cases that we saw in all of FY 2015. OHCD first raised the issue of reverse mortgages nearly a year ago when it reached out to more than 480,000 Philadelphia households. That effort urged homeowners facing foreclosure related to reverse mortgages and other issues to contact the city's Save Your Home Philly hotline for help. That Save Your Home Philly hotline, 215-334-4663, connects homeowners in need with trained paralegals who can begin to map out a strategy for saving the home and schedule the homeowner to meet with a housing counselor. The hotline is a way for Philadelphians to reach out for help before they are facing foreclosure. Once a foreclosure complaint is filed by the lender, including a complaint related to a reverse mortgage due to unpaid taxes, insurance, or inadequate home maintenance, the city begins homeowner-specific outreach. Homeowners receive an individualized letter from OHCD letting them know of their conciliation conference date and encouraging them to reach out to the city for assistance. Homeowners in low and moderate-income neighborhoods receive additional personalized outreach with a neighborhood advisory committee staff member attempts to contact them in person through door-to-door outreach. OHCD has contacted more than 3,000 homeowners by mail and another 500 homeowners through door-to-door outreach thus far this year. Moving forward, OHCD will continue to reach out to homeowners and to ensure that its housing counselors are up to speed on the latest regulations and best practices regarding preventing and responding to reverse mortgage foreclosures. OHCD will again be conducting broad outreach to households in the city with the message to contact the Save Your Home Philly hotline if the homeowner is encountering foreclosure issues, including with reverse mortgages. OHCD's quarterly in-service training for housing counselor has addressed reverse mortgage issues in the past, and we will be doing so again at its next session. As part of this mandatory training, OHCD will work with experts in policy and law to create a fact sheet that counselors can use to assist clients facing foreclosure due to a reverse mortgage, and will make this fact sheet available to council members for use in helping constituents with reverse mortgage problems. OHCD has worked with and will continue to work with all of its partners, including the Philadelphia Corporation for the Aging, to share information about resources available to seniors who are having problems with their reverse mortgages. OHCD and the agencies it funds will continue to raise with partners to address reverse mortgage issues affecting Philadelphia seniors. Although housing counseling is required for homeowners prior to entering into reverse mortgage, often by the time a homeowner talks to a housing counselor, most of whom are agencies not funded by the city, in most cases, that lender has already convinced the homeowner to take the reverse mortgage. If HUD were to require housing counseling before that decision is made, more senior homeowners could avoid the problem associated with reverse mortgages. In 2013, city council unanimously passed an ordinance to create owner-occupied payment agreements that allow low-income homeowners who are delinquent in their property taxes to enter into means-tested payment plans for their arrears. And as many have testified today, unfortunately, some reverse mortgage companies ignore these payment agreements and step in to pay the arrears, beginning a process that frequently leads to foreclosure. leads to foreclosure. OHCD is proud of its record of saving nearly 10,000 homes from foreclosure, and we look very forward to working with the team that made that success possible, housing counseling agencies, nonprofit legal organizations, court staff, city council members, and others, to extend that success to the reverse mortgage problem. Thank you, and I would, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
All right, would you stay until all three of you testify, however many there are on this panel who are here? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify. I've gotten written testimony in, so I'm just going to summarize.
Thank you very much.
We should do everything we can to make the process better, and I'm prepared to help. But that's really not enough, in my opinion, that's what my testimony talks about. If someone needs a reverse mortgage, it's really a failure of society. Reverse mortgages stop the growth of intergenerational wealth, and that's a tremendous problem for the African-American and Latino communities in our city. In the bad old days, when mortgages were redlined, when people of color couldn't get mortgages, they could not grow the intergenerational wealth in the most normal way, and that is parents leave the houses to their children, the children take that money, pay for their college education, start small businesses, start another house. Reverse mortgages are going back to the bad old days and breaking that ability to grow intergenerational wealth. Yes, there are few people it's appropriate for, and it may be a necessary lifeboat, but we should not lose track of the fact that anybody who is taking out a reverse mortgage is taking money away from their families, away from their heirs, and is breaking that longtime tradition of intergenerational wealth, which has allowed people like me a tremendous privilege, and has really harmed minority communities, not just in the city of Philadelphia, but across the country. So yes, let's do the best we can, but let's not be fooled. We need pensions, we need social security, and we need medical payments and treatments for long-term care that don't bankrupt people and don't stop heirs from continuing to grow. Thank you very much. I did bring one person with me who has a personal experience, which I thought you ought to hear, but I'll wait.
Good morning, now afternoon. My name is Bernadette Prater, and I'm a senior housing counselor at Center in the Park, which is a nationally accredited senior community center and a OHCD, PHFA, and HUD-certified housing counseling agency located in Germantown. On behalf of the center, its board of directors, and more than 5,000 members, and 250 individuals for whom we provide housing counseling and financial literacy education annually, it is my pleasure to thank the city council and council's committee on finance for providing us an opportunity today to speak on a topic of critical importance to our participants, who range from age 55 to 100-plus. In addition to being one of only four agencies in the city providing specialized housing counseling for older adults, and providing home visits for homebound and disabled individuals, Center in the Park is also the only housing counseling and foreclosure intervention providing for any age located in Germantown. We've encountered a significant number of older adults with a reverse mortgage who are facing foreclosure. I would say in 2013, I probably had my first case of reverse mortgage foreclosure, and then I had approximately maybe three to five in 2013. In 2014, it increased to approximately 17, and now in 2015, we have about approximately 33 cases. And generally, the challenges and problems our clients are facing include, as was mentioned, lack of homeowners, understanding of the rules and regulations of reverse mortgage, lack of communication via phone or letters from the lenders to the homeowners, and conversely, too much communication, which is perceived as harassment. Medical issues, which prevent homeowners from responding to lenders' correspondence in a timely fashion. Lack of family support, due to either the absence of informal support or distrust of family members. And due to the declining age, chronic health conditions, and/or cognitive status, the homeowner does not understand notifications from the lender and has no support from family for help. More specifically, the primary issue we see are clients who are facing foreclosure as a result of reverse mortgage lenders paying property taxes on behalf of the homeowner, often either without the homeowner's knowledge or awareness. These cases happen in a few ways. First, the city of Philadelphia has a process for paying property taxes, which was mentioned, which allows homeowners to pay their taxes by a certain date. Many of these senior homeowners wait until that deadline to make their payment, often because of the realities of constraints of living on a fixed income. However, we have observed that the reverse mortgage lenders will often pay the property taxes on behalf of the homeowners before the city's deadline, and then will generate a letter to the homeowner stating that this money is due and payable. This then creates confusion for the homeowner, who may have paid their taxes already themselves in the meantime, or are planning to do so by the deadline, or decide to make an agreement. The client believes that they are current with property taxes and do not understand why the lender is demanding repayment. The second situation we frequently see involves homeowners who are on a monthly property tax payment plan with the city. Recently, I had a homeowner in just this situation. She was paying her taxes on a monthly basis, however, at some point in time, the reverse mortgage company stepped in, and unbeknownst to the homeowner, began making the payments and paid the remaining balance of the taxes. And my client then received a letter from the lender stating that she owed the reverse mortgage lender for the taxes that were paid. Another challenge in these cases occur when we have involvement with the Department of Revenue, and we ask them to assist in providing a breakdown regarding their taxes. And in some cases, the paid amount does not match the amount the reverse mortgage lender states that is needed to be paid by the homeowner. Additionally, the client may have difficulty providing reliable documentation of what they paid, which causes more confusion. A third situation we have encountered more recently involves clients who have an agreement with the reverse mortgage lender through the foreclosure diversion program for repayment of property taxes or insurance, previously paid on the homeowner's behalf by the reverse mortgage lender. These repayment agreements between the lender and client last from approximately one to five years in length. When a new property tax year begins, the lender, in some cases, again pays the taxes on behalf of the homeowner, prior to the client having the opportunity to enter into a monthly agreement with the city. In these, excuse me, in these cases, the pre-existing monthly payment agreements with the reverse mortgage lender then increases. Finally, in other cases, clients with reverse mortgage face property taxes-related foreclosures because they simply don't understand or may not remember that they're still responsible for paying the property taxes or homeowner's insurance when they have reverse mortgage, when they have this reverse mortgage. The issue could be prevented through not only proactive education prior to obtaining a reverse mortgage, but ongoing education and counseling through HUD-certified counseling agencies after obtaining a reverse mortgage. I have worked with homeowners who were in active foreclosure as a result of each of these issues. Aside from the legalities involved, the entire process creates an incredible amount of stress, anxiety, and frustration for my clients, many of whom are also living with and managing chronic, chronic health conditions. As an advocate for older adults, we at Center in the Park appreciate city council holding this meeting and holding this hearing to begin to investigate and address some of these issues surrounding the tool that could be very beneficial and should be more consumer-focused and relieve many older adults from the worry around how to stay in their homes and communities as they age. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is Rhonda Lauer, Rhonda Lancaster, excuse me, here? Thanks. And we thank our representatives, for our federal officials, for being here too. Thank you both.
Thank you for having me. Wow, everybody left, thanks. Thank you, Counselwoman Parker, and Counselwoman Blackwell, Counselwoman Brown, and my Counselwoman, Cindy Bass, took off and left. I know she had other things to do. I was hoping she was going to be here, because I live in her district. I'm going to make my comments really brief, not going to reiterate. I'm just going to talk a little bit about my personal experience. Tragically, and parallelly speaking, some of the things that happened to me happened to the woman back there that testified. Some of those same things happened to me, but my situation is a little bit different. I'm an heir to a borrower, and I signed as her power of attorney, because I had power of attorney of my mother at the time that we looked into and researched getting a reverse mortgage. My mother was an esteemed professor at a community college. She did a 25-year run there, and then shortly after she retired, she began to get ill, and her health began to spiral down, and she had dementia, and we looked at putting her in a home, and we decided that wasn't it. We wanted to keep her home. So I went to a housing seminar, and I met someone from Wells Fargo there. Said, you know what? If your name isn't on the deed to the house, you probably need to look at getting a reverse mortgage. I researched it, went home, looked at CNN, looked at Forbes, very money magazine, and they had nothing but good things to say about Wells Fargo. They were the best in the business as far as reverse mortgage. They made it easy, the terms were flexible, so forth and so on. So I reached out to them, spoke with an agent there, and we proceeded forward, and everything was fine until, until the day that I had to sign the papers for the mortgage, reverse mortgage. They were taking $7,000 off the top for the loan. I pushed myself away from the table, said, excuse me, I have to catch my breath. $7,000? Really? For a $118,000 loan? The lady, who was not even the real agent, because the agent was out of town, they sent someone else there, said, well, these are the terms, I'm just here to do the paperwork. I found myself in a juxtaposition because I had to do something to take care of my mother, as her personal situation was spiraled out of control. I signed the papers. We didn't have any more problems after that until my mother passed away. The week after my mother passed away, the bank called me and said, while I'm making arrangements to lay my mother to rest, we want to come in and appraise the house. I said, no, you don't, and I hung the phone up, because I thought it was indignant and insensitive of them to do that, when they know that most people are making preparations the next week to bury their loved ones. I called the bank back, and I said, now, if you want to come and appraise the house, that's fine. They said, oh, no, don't worry about that. Next thing you know, I'm getting letters in the mail from an agency that apparently is hired by Wells Fargo to see if the property is occupied. Now, they already knew that I was the executor of her estate, because they had gotten the papers, and they already knew that I had signed the loan for her. They tried to say that I was not on the paperwork anywhere. They gave, that's when it all started. So, long story short, a couple of years later, I'm still having problems with Wells Fargo. I had to threaten them. I came here to city hall, I got several stays. Anyway, they foreclosed on a property in February of 2011. Excuse me, foreclosed on a property. So here I am, running back and forth to city hall, I got several stays, I went before Judge I.D. Fox, a whole bunch of other judges, I was able to get stays. I even went to the mortgage foreclosure diversion program. Wells Fargo sat in a room, had me sit there for four hours, they never talked to me, they got up and left. They talked to every other client down there but me. When I called Wells Fargo the next day, they said, we don't have anything to do with that, that's your local municipality, you need to call them. I never got a hearing date. So then, they quickly sold my house to Fannie Mae at a sheriff's sale. So here we are with Fannie Mae. Fannie Mae, and I'm sorry if I offended anyone in the room, but Fannie Mae is the worst of the worst. They are horrible. I called them, they kept telling me, they insisted they have no record of ever having purchased my house. I said, well, that's very interesting, because on the city docket, it has my address listed as sold to you. What do you mean, you don't, we don't have it? I called them for months and months and months and months, and nothing. So to me, there was a planned and conceived way to get my house from under me. Part of the reason why is because my particular case got national attention. I was in the media, because I refused to leave my house. I sent a very clear and concise message to several people, including Jewel Williams, and I said, I will not leave under these terms. I have a right to protect myself, and I'm not going to leave. So he ended up, and he made it personal. I'm telling the way it really happened. So, long story short, after I was in the Philadelphia papers, then I started getting interviews from the Chicago Sun-Times, the Los Angeles Times, the Boston Herald, you can Google it. So anyway, we had rallies in front of my house, and the media was coming out. In fact, Lance was even at a couple of those. And next thing I know, they show up, they tried to get in my house, they couldn't get in, they came back again, two months later, and this time they got in. And a deputy stood in my face and said, you have to get out now. I said, don't stand here in my house, this is still my house until the day is over. And they got nasty with me. So, to short of it is, this is a different side of what you've been hearing about. This is the ugly side. Now, in summation, I'm going to wrap this up. I want to read to you a piece of a deposition that I had to give to the Zen attorney that was representing me. "Friday, April 19th, this is the year 2013. I was notified by a neighbor that a lady and a man were breaking locks off of my garage and my house doors by an eyewitness. I quickly made my way over to the house and saw a man putting tools and art pieces in his vehicle. I inquired to him about who he was, and he told me he was with a real estate agent." Now, this is the real estate agent that has the agent that is supposed to be trying to sell the house. "I made my way into the back gate of my property, and the man whom I just spoke to ran in front of me and slammed the door in my face, so I could not get in the house. The next thing I know, a lady appears, who introduces herself as the REO agent. She's in my kitchen, then an appraiser appears. The agent says they're assessing the property. So I start walking through the house to see what is taking place. The agent is following behind me and tells me, we see a lot of stuff wrapped up, and we're supposed to take this to the storage unit." I tell her, not necessary. She keeps reiterating to me that the workers will take out my trash, then after some small talk and trying to inquire about information on the loan and other things. This is her trying to inquire to me about the type of loan, which was totally inappropriate and unethical. She says, I'm going to do you a favor. You pick a day and call me, and I'll come open the house up, and you can come get whatever you want, because after that, the workers will be in here working. I set a date, and we confirmed it. I asked her why it was so difficult to get to the REO division of Fannie Mae. She stated, she doesn't work with that division, she works with another division of Fannie Mae, and that once Fannie Mae acquires the property, it's sealed, and there's really no way to get it back. So we go on from there. But anyway, the point is, one of the topical things is that in Pennsylvania, there is no right of rescission. A right of rescission allows the borrower to have some flexibility in creating a situation where they can buy the property back. We need to push for that here. That is part of the problem. No right of rescission, the borrower is at the mercy of the bank, and they have no say-so, as you've heard from repeated lawyers, legal agencies, housing agencies, and other people who have suffered the same fate as I. And so, looking at it in hindsight, and my case is still going on, my case has not rested yet, because there have been too many illegal things that happened to me along the way. And all of this happened because I was my mother's power of attorney, then her executrix. And so the bank took that as an advantage point, to use it to get the house, to get me out of my own house. I was not afforded the opportunities that I should have had through the mortgage diversion program, or any other entity. Most times when I went, I went to community legal services, they told me, we can't help you, because we don't deal in reverse mortgages. What that says is reverse mortgages are a very extremely complex tool, and they are not for the average person. It really is for somebody who does not have airship, it is really for somebody who, once they pass away, they don't care what happens to the property. It is not for people who have a legacy to carry on. With that, I want to thank you, because I have to go, and I hope we'll be able to talk soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and we're here for you. Yes, let me ask, for our elected officials, Sheriff Bullock and Karen Warrington, would you all like to testify? You want to hear the rest of the panel? And we thank you for coming, certainly for Congressman Brady, certainly for Bob Casey. We thank you for representing our federal officials and for being here. Thank you both.
Thank you for allowing us to be here.
So we have a lot of facts that we have to go through.
Thank you, and thank you for getting the information, so that you can take it back and, and see what it is we can do. it is we can do. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, you would like to speak to PH, either PHCD or OHCD?
Melissa Law. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for your testimony.
Yes.
And I want to make sure, I'm rechecking the facts I need you to clarify. So is a part of your agency's protocol, counseling on this issue is one of the check-offs for counselors at your agency, correct?
I...
Counseling around reverse mortgages?
Around reverse mortgages.
Right.
I believe, it's my understanding, that you have to be an HECM-certified mortgage counselor.
Okay, then.
Yes. And we have two of those. Right, yes. And, um, what often, it's my understanding what the issue is, is that by the time the client seeks this counseling, the decision has been made.
Mm-hmm.
And it's also my understanding that there's very strict protocol about what they can and cannot do.
I see. So in other words, they may already be in the quid mire by the time they get to your agency.
They've already made up their mind.
I see.
Right. So I think, you know, a lot of, you know, working with all of our partners at every level, really getting that word out first, right? Making sure that we have materials that are easily comprehensible.
I call that dummy proof. Making sure materials are dummy proof.
Exactly. Yeah. For me, I mean, all, right? Yeah. So I think that's going to be a really important strategy in working with, you know, counsel and the NACs and all of our partners to make sure that the outreach and getting the, um, that message out in a dummy-proof way before seniors enter into this type of arrangement is going to be really, really key.
So I completely agree with you. And the reason why I raised at what juncture do seniors get this information?
Mm-hmm.
I'm reflecting on my lead bill that I introduced several years ago, and one of the outcomes of the investigation was requiring LNI to add to their protocols when landlords want to come and seek LNI licensing, that they have to verify that they are providing information to their tenants around lead. And that can be reflected in the lease, it could be reflected in the brochure that they hand out, but it's a standard requirement alerting landlords, being required to alert tenants that if your building was built before 1967, then they're required to educate you, inform you about the perils of lead.
Right.
So a similar opportunity might exist here in figuring out which agency can carry the banner that reverse mortgages are A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and do that at the front door.
Right.
Prior to them getting in that circumstance.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clarify, would you come forward again?
And Council Lady, the CLS lawyers, the two CLS.
And the CLS lawyers?
Thank you. We have, and while OHCD is here, we're asking a CLS to come. And it'll be very quick. We want to go back to this issue of counseling, and that was one of the first questions we asked, and I'm glad you mentioned that again, Council Lady Reynolds Brown. Because when we talked about two, and we mentioned that there, we questioned whether or not there were two reverse mortgage housing counseling agencies in Philadelphia, and that was Clarify, one of them. What we just heard was that all reverse mortgage counselors have to be HECOM certified. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. And with that being said, I want you to tell us more, because our Attorney General's office is paying very close attention to that, so in the midst of testimony, they've asked these questions. When is housing counseling required in the process? That's one. What is discussed? How long is the session? Is it over the telephone with someone in California, or someone in Chicago, or someone in another place? Or am I sitting face-to-face with someone? Or is this literally someone being able to say, "I've met the housing counseling requirement to get through this process, and I can now just check it, check it off the list"? Are there any documents reviewed? Can you all answer that? And I want to, see, between CLS and you all, you all could answer that for us.
Can you start at the top, and we'll go through the questions?
What's discussed? What's discussed? And when does it occur in the process? What's discussed? When does it occur? How long is the session? Is it face-to-face? Is it over the telephone?
So I'll let Nicole speak to what's discussed because she does it every day. But the initial question of when does it happen? A mortgage broker can take an application, but they cannot submit the application for underwriting without a certificate stating that the homeowner has been counseled. So generally, what happens is that the homeowner seeks out the reverse mortgage broker. The reverse mortgage broker gives the homeowner some information, takes their application, informs them that they need counseling. Counseling then, in most instances, does happen over the telephone. That is primarily a homeowner preference.
It's a preference.
Yes. We offer face-to-face as well as telephone. About 10% to 15% of what we do is face-to-face. Our telephone sessions generally last about 90 minutes, and our face-to-face sessions are at least two hours, sometimes longer.
Could I just add that the sales process for selling a reverse mortgage to a senior has been well underway before the counseling happens, and that's the, that's the meaning of what was said, when they've basically already decided to get the product before they get counseling and hear about the risks and benefits. The counseling can be done by any HUD certified counselor nationwide, and reverse mortgage brokers will often refer homeowners to agencies in California, for example. And I do not know that, although every agency is required to follow the same protocol in the counseling, I think some agencies do a much more consumer-conscious job of doing it than others. And brokers who want to sell their product may refer people to counselors who may be a little less scrupulous than Clarify.
And also unknowing, a reverse mortgage counselor in California has no idea what the programs are in Philadelphia. So as Nicole mentioned earlier, offering clients local resources of things that can solve their financial issues rather than getting the reverse mortgage as other options.
As it relates to the closing of the loan, does the CFPB state that counselors are only paid if the loan closes? Is that something that we need to, and I want us to think about what we just said. Our housing, and we know about our housing counseling agencies in the city of Philadelphia, especially those that are funded by OHCD. Listen, they're like chitty-chitty-bang-bang sitting on the fence trying to make a dollar out of 15 cents, right? And I, and I know the work that they do because we've been with them for a long, long time. However, because we know all housing counseling agencies are not made of the same DNA, is the understanding accurate in that counselor, counseling agencies only get paid if the reverse mortgage loan closes? Is that accurate or no?
No. No, the client has, the borrower has the option to pay for the counseling before they close the loan. Our low and moderate income clients generally defer the payment until closing. If they don't close the loan, we, we don't go after them for the fee. We waive the fee.
So let me ask you this, and this is, and this is why this has come up. Obviously, I'm biased because we know you all and we know your work, but I don't know the guys we're having a conversation with on the telephone who are in another state. And I'm just trying to figure out, is there a financial incentive directly attached to the counseling? And are the agencies, again, outside of those who we know and work with, are they feeling an incentive to close?
The counseling agencies don't really have an impact on whether the client closes on the loan or not.
So just that we get them, that we, the counseling is required. You just told us earlier that you can't get to that point. You can't even send the information up. It can't even go to underwriting, you mentioned, unless you, unless you get through this process. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
So if, so if I can't even get to underwriting before this process takes place, then some could look at this and feel that there is a direct connection, particularly for those that are away, who may be less, less scrupulous in the way that they record the, the information. They could feel some sort of financial incentive to ensure that they got through this process.
Sure, I'm following your path.
Housing counseling agencies who are required to provide the counseling for reverse mortgages have to be HECOM certified.
Correct.
You can't get to underwriting unless you've gone through the counseling process.
Correct.
I asked you whether or not that prior, that once the loan closes, is, would you say that because the counseling has to take place before the loan can get to the underwriting stage, that a counseling agency can feel that they are incentivized because they know that they will not get paid until the loan closes? Am I making sense to you now?
Yes, but I don't think, I don't think there's a, there's a parallel there.
So you don't see an incentive? And that's our question. The question was, for those housing counseling agencies that are not operating in the city of Philadelphia, do we need to sort of make a note about whether or not there's a direct connection between the transaction and the counseling service they provide and, and the incentive?
Right. The impact where, that I mentioned about, the counseling session might be longer and more in-depth if it's local because the local resources are known, the local programs are known, and working with a borrower that is in your own neighborhood, there's definitely a strong benefit to that. But as Peter mentioned, the counseling happens after the sales pitch.
Mm-hmm.
And they are all the right reasons why they need to get this loan, and they should, you know, they have to get this loan. And oftentimes, the counseling is checking the box, getting a certificate, sending it through underwriting.
Most of the clients that we counsel have been referred to us by lenders. Like, the lenders told, told the client to seek counseling. They gave them a list of, you know, counselors, and then that's how they came to counseling. So they've already made a conscious decision to get the loan, and this is just the step that's needed to complete the process.
I sat through a counseling session with a client who I was actually, for whom a reverse mortgage was an appropriate product, and I was working with him to, to go through the reverse mortgage process. And in his case, Clarify was the counselor, and I thought Clarify did a very good job of explaining things. However, it's possible to simply go through a checklist of points and make sure that you say all the things that are required without really ascertaining that the borrower really understands any of what you're saying. And if you, or if you go through all of that, then you've completed the counseling, whether or not the borrower really understands anything.
Well, listen, I want to thank you all for trying to sort of get to the heart of that question. And I just want to add for the record that the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau's Reverse Mortgages Report to Congress very specifically talks about some of the challenges as it relates to counseling and reverse mortgages. And it talks about, and I'm going to, very specifically, and I just want you all to just note it for the record, some counseling agencies only receive payment if and when the reverse mortgage is closed. The counseling fee is paid with loan proceeds, which could undermine counselors' impartiality. So I don't, I don't, I don't, I am not offended that you were all so shocked by the possibility because you are Clarify. But we do want to note for the record that we sort of did not pull that connection between the closing of a reverse mortgage loan and a financial incentive for the housing counseling agency. We didn't pull it out of the sky, okay? So we just, just make a note. We know it's not you guys, right? Because you're the cream of the crop. But it is directly listed as a concern in a reverse mortgages report to Congress.
Councilwoman Parker, there's one other important issue around counseling, which is that HUD does not require that non-borrowing spouses participate in the counseling, and does not require that other family members participate in the housing, in the counseling, even if they are starting out as a co-owner of the property and will be signing their interest away as part of the loan process. HUD quote-unquote encourages them to be included, but that encouragement doesn't mean anything because there's no teeth.
Was that in the testimony that we heard earlier today, would you consider that to be a prime, a prime example for us, the client who was here?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you so, so very much, yes.
We want to get as much information on the record as possible because as the sponsor said, this is an investigatory step, and she needs as much information as possible for the next step of action. Is there a suitability requirement by the potential, and forgive me if I missed this during testimony, by the potential banking institution that will get the mortgage? In other words, do they have a checklist that helps to determine if this particular individual is suitable, positioned financially to even think about a reverse mortgage?
There is now, as part of the underwriting process. There did not used to be. So there are a lot of homeowners in existing reverse mortgages who got into them without any evaluation of their suitability. For new loans, there is a process. I'm not familiar, it's, it's new enough that I'm not familiar with how it plays out and whether it's working or not.
And new means what? Does that mean six months old, a year old?
April of, April of 2015 it went into effect.
But there are a lot of homeowners in these loans who never had that suitability evaluated.
So therein may lie another required step with what you do next. Thank you.
I know we're going to close, but before we do, I want to, again, just repeat for the record, a special thanks to each of you. I want to thank the staff for all of their hard work. I know, you know, it's, it's long, it's like marathon, right? Not a sprint, definitely. But as Councilwoman Reynolds Brown just noted, the purpose of this is to get all of this testimony on the record. And as we comb through all of your responses and comments, we will then help to put together, from an intergovernmental perspective, with our federal partners and our state partners, specific remedies, and obviously with the, with our city administration, specific remedies that we think that we can work to get implemented at each level of government, some via a legislative process, some things just can happen from a, a policy implementation perspective. So I thank all of you. We're going to be bringing the working group back together. And for those who are sitting here saying, "We got all of this great information, but there were no lenders here today." Someone's saying, "Where are the lenders?" We knew how much time this would take. So as we invite the lenders to the next hearing, we won't be able to say to them, "Cole, just come to a hearing." We'll be able to say, "Here's the testimony from the first hearing. Please take a look at this. After you review this, now can you come to the table?" We'll hear their perspectives, and we want to work together to come up with some proposed solutions and potential opportunities. But none of that will be possible unless we get our great friends who were here today, who start seeing some of the facts that we need, and we'll need a more extensive study, and we hope to be able to work with the Reinvestment Fund to get that done, and we'll bring you all together. I want to thank you to the staff, all the council members, but to you, Councilwoman Blackwell, Madam Chair, you stayed in there with us today as usual, and I just want you to know, I'm grateful, Councilwoman, and to all of the members of the committee who were here today. They've had 1,001 things, but they made this a priority. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And let me thank everyone as well, as well as my colleagues here. So we are going to continue this hearing, subject to the call of the chair. Thank you all.